Wishful thinking.
What day?
He's gonna say no to everything, are you guys gonna say yes to everything? Remember that.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, December 10th, 2024. Please stand up for their right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order and point. Okay, do we have any minutes or reports received in the file?
No, none.
Okay. Commissioner committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We've got HBA board meeting this afternoon, if we're not still in here till 10 o'clock tonight. Planning commission meeting this evening. Budget meetings tomorrow again, HBA Christmas party tomorrow night. Ten tentative meetings Thursday for budget as well, Russellville. Christmas dinner Thursday evening, chief's meeting Thursday evening. That's about it besides other Christmas stuff.
Let's see, I'm going to a Bugle Boy event this evening. To, I think, accept the check for a safety net. And commission meeting tomorrow, maybe Thursday. Oh, Thursday evening, you mentioned Russellville, right?
Yeah.
Friday, nothing here. Monday, that's it.
We're gonna get done tomorrow because I've gotta be over Columbia at MU at eight. And then I've got homeless task force at 11:00, and then Russellville. Friday is National Guard Day, so everybody, thank the National Guard. There's all kinds of Christmas parties. Saturdays is wreaths for heroes at the National Cemetery, and I am the speaker. Sunday is the West Bay Historical Society Christmas Open House, and it is chock full of my toys, trains, bears, Santas. So come down and look at all my toys. And that is all I've got. We'll go with appointments by commission, reappointments of Adam Brown and Jamie Pearson to Cole County Parks Committee.
We have those.
Yes, we do. We do.
All right, be good with that then? I'll make the motion to reappoint Adam Brown and Jamie Pearson to the Cole County Parks Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reappointment of Greg Bowman and Don Hillis to Public Works Roden Bridge Advisory Board.
Okay, good. Make a motion to reappoint Greg Bowman and Don Hillis to the Public Works Roden Bridge Advisory Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The reappointment of Jason Gerling to the Public Works Traffic and Safety Advisory Board.
Good. Make a motion to reappoint, reappoint Jason Gerling to the Public Works Traffic and Safety Advisory Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I really do appreciate all of our citizens coming forward, serving on these committees. They do a great job, and there's enough compensation for it, so. Do we have any commission comments? Bids and contracts, approval and signing of sole source form for the sirens for EMA.
This is, we already ran this out in the paper, so this is the sole source form for outdoor warning consulting for the two sirens. One of them, in the Centertown quote, was $2,820, and then the Truman one was $43,678. And I do have the sole source and the two quotes for approval.
I didn't look anymore, did you send the attachments or?
I'm pretty sure I did.
Okay.
And those will be covered by grants, right?
The 44 one is.
Yes.
I don't think the other one.
I think he applied for, I think Nick did both of them in the grant.
Good, good, okay.
So they should be both, I think, we'll have to confirm with Bill.
And like I said, I didn't get to look at this, and I'm sorry. Where was that compared to what they used to cost? Is that about the same ballpark compared to, they gone up quite a bit, I was just curious.
I can let you know, I honestly don't know.
Well, the first started there about $28,000, the last one we did was about $35,000, and this is.
The one to replace all of it was the $43,678.
So yes, they are going up.
I can get something together though and kind of show you.
No, I just can't get online right now to find your email, so it's, it is covered by the grant though, so. Okay, I'm good.
Otherwise, we get like a megaphone, and Jeff can sit on top and pull out on the east end and scream, tornado!
That's where it might stand out on the front porch looking for the tornado.
So we're, we've been through the sole source here, we're ready to approve the purchase, is what we're doing?
Approve the sole source and then the two quotes as well.
First of all, make a motion to approve the sole source prices that were quoted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make another motion to go forward with the purchase of $46,498. And... Was it 2,820?
Yep.
For the outdoor warning equipment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval and signing of furniture purchase course.
This is a request for the new desk, for a desk for the new judge. She did find one at MVE, which is on a state contract for $1,631. If it's approved today, I need the order form signed as well as the proof form.
I'm good with this, I know that the treasurer was fortunate to pick up the same desk for about 1,400, but it was a floor model, I think. They were just sitting there.
It was a showroom one.
And I visited with the incoming associate circuit judge, and this meets her needs. So I'll make a motion to approve the order form and the MVE production proof form. $1,631 for the desk for the new associate commissioner who takes office on January 1st.
Second.
All in favor?
Associate judge, did I say commissioner?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Associate judge.
Well, they used to be called that.
Okay, associate judge.
Yep.
That's my motion.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll put a new business, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, assessor's office to present errors and omissions.
They did drop these off to me last week, but I think they probably thought the agenda started at nine. But I do have both the parcels, it looks like one of them, this one area was considered to be residential, but I guess it's commercial. So I don't know if you want to look at these and approve them without them here, or if you want them here.
If they're gonna be here later today, let's just wait.
Yeah, we'll wait, we will move to discussion of 2025 ambulance fees, if that's okay with Chief Hoy.
Messed you guys up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we brought this up at the budget hearing, discussing the rate change for our 2025 fee schedule. I'm proposing an across-the-board 10% increase due to increases in cost to deliver service such as fuel, maintenance, and medical supplies. As we discussed, there is legislation that is planning to be filed again this session related to ambulance billing, and basically setting the rates or mandating the private insurance companies to pay 325% of the Medicare rate. 325% of the Medicare rate is just a little bit higher than what our 2025 fee rate proposal is. So we're kind of in that sweet spot where we're not at the top of what is being proposed, but we're not super far off base. So I believe 10% is a solid number that will help offset some of the costs that we've incurred. And...
How much did the Medicare rate go up, did they pay?
The Medicare rate was increased about 2.5% this year. You know, obviously, one of the challenges with our industry is that Medicare and CMS rates are always lagging well behind what it costs us to do business. And unfortunately, that is a poor business model for those who have private insurance, but it's the only way that we survive. So happy to answer any questions.
You use the term sweet spot, when you and I discussed this, it is fair compared to the charges of other ambulance districts.
I think you're going to see a lot of variations as you look across the board. You know, a lot of districts receive 100% of their tax revenue, whether that's property tax or sales tax. The way the Cole County EMS sales tax was presented is that we receive 40% of that as a offset to our operating budget, so we are not receiving 100% of that tax funding, so there is a fee associated with delivering our services.
Yeah, Paul, we're good with it?
Uh, yeah, I just gotta cut here.
I will make a motion to adopt the 2025 fees for service provided by Chief Hoy for the ambulance services that are provided to users in the community.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, security electronics bid document for Cole County Sheriff's Department.
I can talk on this briefly, I thought Wheeler might be up here, but we did the bid opening last week for the whole security electronics over there. We had one bid come in, which was accurate controls. Their total without alternates was 1,762,900, and then with alternates, it was over 2 million. I know he had budgeted anywhere between 1.2 and 1.3 million, and so his recommendation is to reject all bids. But I don't know what his game plan is moving forward with this project. I don't know if we want to wait until he comes in to discuss more, or, but I know that's his plan.
Okay, yes, I think we need to probably wait.
Yeah, that's a lot higher than I thought it was gonna be.
Yes.
I know where the sheriff stands on this, he came by and visited with me, and he may have visited with the other two commissioners, but it'd be safe to ask when he's here.
Yeah.
We're talking that amount, yes, I think.
Okay.
We'll just wait till he shows up.
Okay.
Okay. Then I guess the scope of work for jail management to Civic Plus interface with Huber Associates is also...
Is that a Brian thing, or is that somebody?
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, no, it's the jail, I'm sorry.
It's a jail.
Yeah, so it's the sheriff. Okay, so we can wait on that one too.
Okay, well, do we want to go into budget and then come back out to, I hate to...
As these things come up, yeah.
Yeah, I hate to sit and wait.
We're gonna take a break around noon?
Yes. We might take a break, a little break before that too, just...
Well, I just have something I need to run and do kind of had scheduled, but if I need to reschedule it, I can.
No, we will, we'll...
We've got 15:30.
There he is.
I thought I heard him whispering.
Can I make an announcement real quick?
Yes.
Our parking lot was paid, or they poured concrete yesterday, which means by Monday we'll have it open. So all the entities that are using it, the gate, the other gate's still working okay, but the main one will be open, and you'll be able to come in the regular way.
Is it now the time to go put your handprints in?
Too late, you should have done that. But we don't want you driving over, probably wouldn't be good right now, still a little green.
Sheriff, we'll put you on the spot.
Sorry.
That electronic bid documents that Jess just brought us, what are you, security?
I'd ask that you reject it. Matter of fact, at your controls right now, our old security system is down, been down since 6:44. They have no idea what's going on with it, so we're working on it right now, but our security electronics is down. 1.9 million is what it came back at, that was way above what I thought it was gonna be. I would ask that we reject that bid at this time, and then we'll try to, we'll figure something out at a later date.
Did you run over here?
Well, so with the security electronics, we can't run the main elevator, and we can't open any of the doors. So I had to use my master key to go down to the parking area and unlock the door to get in to open the Sallyport that ate the worm that ate the whatever that is, but anyway, I had to, so then I had to walk, jog all the way back up here. So I'm better now. I'll get a cup of coffee in a minute.
Okay, so we will reject that bid, and then...
Yeah, make a motion, please, sir.
What's the official title of the?
It's the security electronics bid.
I'll make a motion to reject the security electronics replacement project for Cole County Sheriff's Department that was turned in with alternates at a price of $2,094,800.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then, scope of work for jail management to Civic Plus interface with Huber and Associates.
So this is just, it says on here $1,500, this isn't gonna cost us anything, it's just a scope of work for them to be able to fix the interface towards Civic Plus, our website. This is gonna put the jail roster on our, on our website so people can access it.
Okay, so I can look and find my relatives that are incarcerated?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. That'll be handy.
That's not on your little website thing?
It will be, yeah, it'll be on our website.
Oh, so it's not right now?
It is right now, but this is from going, this is, we're getting rid of Tyler, and we're going to Interpol. So this is the Interpol version of that.
So then you said that says $1,500, but it's not costing us?
No, because we've already, you've already, you've already signed the agreement for the $1,500. This is simply just a scope of work. I think I attached, if I didn't, I have the email from Huber Associates saying that there's no funds attached to this. This is just simply so they can have a scope of work.
It's kind of confusing to me.
We'll give this a shot.
That was a little confusing to me.
I'll make a motion to accept the Huber and Associates description of services to be rendered with respect to the inmate population of the Sheriff Wheeler Hilton.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we'll just wait on this two. Don, can you grab that?
Yeah, yeah, sign it.
I'm sorry, never mind.
Just teasing.
So I can get to sign this Cole County Sheriff's Office?
Wow, just scratch it.
Okay. Well, it's only, not even 20 after eight yet, so if the assessor doesn't come over...
I'll come back and get you.
Do we want to go ahead and start?
Yeah, I'd say go ahead and start budget hearings, and then we'll come get Don when the assessor comes to hear the vote.
Okay, so are we going to do?
Mark, or Sheriff Clerk walked in, I asked him about a specific item that we didn't talk about during last week's budget hearings, the court's security, security cameras? If you could maybe give us more information on that.
Well, I think that's gonna be put on hold until after the first of the year now.
Oh, okay.
In talking to Jess Green, while ago, or the last night, he wants to hold it off till the first of the year. Due to other things coming up.
So just take that off the, off the budget? Okay, great.
Thank you.
And really, as far as your budget, regular budget, and the court's budget, that's all pretty much been hashed out. So I don't think we need, need you back anymore, so. Okay, thanks, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Dirk.
How you wanna go around and I'll go with...
There it is.
Okay.
Where was that court, too? Or how much was it?
We should go through the book in order, or what?
Well, Chief Hoy asked if we could go over his budget today, 'cause tomorrow does not work well with him. I know just a couple of larger departments, Eric Landler said tomorrow would work better for him, so if we could wait. No, that's how it works, tomorrow. I'll be in agreement. prosecutor, Josh Thompson, since he's got, sent us his salary request detail late last week after his hearing. He asked if we could sit in, if tomorrow would work better for him, so that is off for tomorrow. Those are the main, the larger departments that I contacted. And then sheriff's here, we could probably talk about this today, I would think, if you're...
That's fine, I'm here, I'm here today and tomorrow.
Okay, all right, so. So we can just, we don't have to go in order, we can just kind of...
Well, this is the sheriff, we have EMS shake a flip coin and see who goes first.
Well, we could start with EMS, now we can go sheriff after that. EMS's budget starts on... Well, EMS sales tax, was there anything additional there? I know I need to add that. Oh, your ARPA.
What page?
Page 117. I know I need, we need to add your ARPA grant that just recently got approved for 99...
99,800.
Change, yeah, okay. So that'll go in the grant, or in the budget of 650, sales taxes and in now. 99, you know, same amount of revenues and expenditures, so no net effect, but other than that, do you, anything else in sales tax?
The only thing that we talked about is there's gonna be some carryforward of the CDBG funds, 'cause we're not gonna be able to issue payment and close that project before the end of the budget year, so we'll just have to do a little...
How much?
There's 800,000 pending.
There's a PO out there, so it carried forward.
Oh, we still got 800,000 roughly to pay on the construction.
I'll take it.
There was a, still a small city payment waiting for it too. So hopefully we get that before the end.
Yeah, we haven't gotten everything yet from the city on that, so, yeah, okay.
So page 117 is being adopted as is, except for adding ARPA, adding the carryforward, or not adding, but adjusting those to the actual...
Yeah, because this is cash basis, so we're gonna get it paid for by the end of the year, we gotta, we gotta roll it forward to next year, so. The funds are encumbered, you probably considered that when you were estimating your cash forward amount, so...
Yeah, I have...
Most likely, the cash forward amount, 1.6 million, will be higher.
Right.
Right, and then immediately depleted in January, not depleted, but reduced.
When the final payment's issued, yeah, all that gets, the cash forward number won't actually change until next budget year, but I have updated numbers, I ran those last week, so I can kind of give you a rough estimate on where we sit with everything.
Well, then I put the actual cash forward number in when we get to January 1st.
The bank account, yeah.
Straight out of the bank, they reconcile a bank balance.
Sure.
That's, that goes in before you adopt the final adoption of the budget.
Which will happen on 7th of January?
January 7th, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, the other thing, I guess the transfer could change some based on how the 660 budget works out, 'cause there's the, there's always a transfer from, from sales tax to EMS enterprise to balance 660. So that could change.
Yeah, barring any unforeseen changes, that number is actually gonna get lower, because our revenue, we had another big month in revenue, so. Looking good there.
So when the year, the books are closed for the year ended, December 31 of 24, EMS will show, or one of the EMS funds will show more sales tax than was originally anticipated?
Yeah, the operating fund will show more revenue than what was initially, initially anticipated by about $900,000, based on...
The fees, ambulance fees.
The fees, yes.
Not sales.
So, so sales tax, the sales tax is done, that number is, was like 3.3 million, 3.35 million this year. So the, the sales tax fund is accurate, where we would see a large overage in revenue is in the enterprise fund, and that is from the fees for service.
Yes, but that's just due to being busier.
Correct.
Final sales tax number is right, 3.351 million, yeah. So it was about...
It's just a few dollars.
100,000 over budget, actually.
It was about 97,000 over budget.
And Debbie, that tracks with the other funds that collect sales tax?
Yeah, they're all about the same, about 3, 3.2 compared to last year.
Yes.
Yes.
And probably over budget a little bit because we didn't?
Yeah, we usually budget kind of flat, or did you put it 3%?
You put it in at like 2, didn't you?
Yeah, I think it was about 2% last year.
More like 3.4?
For 25, I think I'm estimating 3%, yeah.
3, okay.
Probably do have to some, I'll try to get that updated for us by tomorrow.
Okay.
And the capital list, he usually comes before you and asks to bid those things out, so that's not really anything that you have to officially approve him to go buy right now, right?
Yeah, the only thing, you do have one of the ambulances approved, we'll see that in January. And then a lot of these other projects will be throughout the year, obviously, we'd like to get some of them done. The big project, the Station 4 remodel in, in Brazito, that's gonna take some coordination and some planning to get a bid and what we want to do there, so we'll just keep you informed on that. But since the fire department's gonna join in on that project, we want to make sure that we're coordinating with them and making sure that we're all on the same page.
That ambulance is gonna, that one ambulance is gonna come in at approximately half of the 575?
Yeah.
Sales tax?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Enterprise fund starts on 119, first page is revenues, like Chief Hoy mentioned, the fees are way up. We got one, I forget where we at now, we got one more month to go.
Yeah.
Take a look at that here. We're at 4,777,000 as of the end of November, with one more month to go, so.
So I would anticipate that number being about $900,000 over what we have budgeted this year, for a total of about 5.1 million is what we're anticipating. Now, there's a couple of different factors there, one, obviously, we're running more calls for service, but when we bill this, there's always a maturity date on those accounts. So some years, as insurance and the other payers work through their programs, there's gonna be a larger influx in, in funds. So I think it's a combination of a rate change, running 1,000 more calls for service, and we're seeing increased payments from some of those older, more mature accounts that are finally getting paid up. So I believe that 5.1's... So, um, I, I believe that, that five point one's a good number, but I think that we will also replicate it again next year. Uh, barring any substantial drop off in the number of calls for service. Which I don't think is going to happen.
I've been sitting here, yesterday I saw your ambulance. Have we started the BLS ambulance yet?
Yes, yep. Um, so we're still waiting on just a couple more people to, uh, to come on board there on orientation. But, uh, depending on the day, um, usually we'll have that eighth ambulance, some days it has paramedic on it just because of part time and people that we have available. Other days, it's, it's a BLS crew and they're out doing what BLS crews do, so.
You okay with leaving, just leaving the estimate though at five million even?
I think, I think that's safe, yeah.
Alright. Uh, yeah, then the cash forward, you know, whatever we end up as actual, that'll get adjusted. Is that number looking about, could be a little higher maybe?
I, it depends on where we end up with the expenditures. I, I think it's going to be in that seven hundred thousand dollar range. It's just a matter of what the final numbers are in things like fuel and some of those other accounts that we haven't paid yet, so.
Right now, we're at six hundred and forty-three thousand.
While we're on the first one, but this question could come up, uh, many times, on the interest, projected interest revenue, did you? I know that's sort of a, a guess, guesstimate, are you anticipating?
The treasurer still believes interest rates will decrease during the year.
Right.
There's Fed, anticipated Fed rate cuts for next year.
Okay, so you knocked that down when it got to you?
I did, because we're at, uh, with the eleven months of interest, we're at, currently at twenty-seven seven, twenty-seven thousand seven hundred for the year. So another month would put it right around thirty thousand, so we're estimated to be lower next year.
You're pretty conservative there, aren't you?
I'm fairly conservative, pretty conservative about it, yeah, that's just, I mean, it's, it's a, it's not a big part of the budget.
Right.
It's a pretty small part, so. Yeah, sure, we want to try to be accurate, but it's, um, maybe more of the conservative side because of. Always, I, 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 interest rates are always a big uncertainty.
Uh, the only one thing that we could update is we do know the number for the D E M T reimbursement. We have it listed as seventy-five thousand, I think that's more like ninety, I think it's ninety-three thousand.
Okay.
Or ninety-one, ninety-three thousand, something like that, and then we have the final number, um, when we get to the D E M T fees on the expenditure side as well, so we can firm that up a little bit.
Go back to those numbers you presented, okay. Change those, yeah. Uh, that's, okay, thirty-five thousand for now, double check that on fees, okay.
I'm just gonna bust everybody's bubble here on the insurance. Um, we heard about Friday, Harry was with, um, it looks like potentially we're bringing new travelers to renew with. As far as EMS line, um, the first one which is the, at fifty-two thousand. Basically, that's gonna be forty-two, but we always put extra money in there for two deductibles at least. And we know there's way more than two deductibles that happen, so the fifty-two, I'm okay with if you guys are okay with. But again, that's only really two vehicles at the five thousand dollar deductible.
I thought that deductible's going way up.
It's going way up on if we hit another vehicle, the repairs to our vehicles is still five thousand, but it's twenty-five thousand if we hit a different vehicle.
Or have medical.
Or have medical. So yes, that is going way up, at twenty-five thousand. Do we plan for that, do we not plan for that, I think we should plan some for that, I mean, I mean, that's kinda up to you guys. I mean, we, I could tell you how many we have in a year's time, but, but I am gonna get to the next one here, which is the auto. And that needs to go up to a hundred and forty-eight thousand.
What, what line are you on?
On page one twenty, the bottom, the last, under materials and supplies, about a third of the way down, there's insurance.
It's at ninety-five now.
So on your insurance, I'm gonna stay with the insurance one first.
Those are all insurance, yes.
The fifty-two is, what were you talking about, the deductibles that we usually have two deductibles that we budget for, but we have more?
Well, okay, so the insurance itself is gonna cost forty-two thousand of that fifty-two.
Okay.
And then we have deductibles that we're gonna have to meet throughout the year, depending on how many vehicles are wrecked.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out where you were coming up with the numbers.
Oh, so, I'm sorry, now I'm a little confused, the insurance line is forty-two thousand, actual insurance cost on vehicles? On the building?
On the buildings.
On the building, okay.
But we kinda just put the autos in there too, I mean, we could put the autos down below too. Some departments break them down, some don't, you know, some of them just work out of the insurance line.
About the time you cleared it up for me, you stuck my face in the mud.
I would prefer.
Why do we got our autos in?
We can bring it down.
Sorry, I would think deductibles on auto should go in the auto line.
Okay.
Yeah.
To match the.
We can bring it down.
So the insurance.
He's the only one who has an auto line for insurance, maybe the sheriff does.
The insurance is actually building insurance.
Property insurance, yes, so that should be the exact number.
You have ten thousand in there for auto deductibles.
It just so happens we put a place number in there at fifty-two thousand, we didn't know how much the new building was gonna cost us, so that's why it's higher, right? So, okay, we'll just do that one as the property.
We should be budgeting more than two deductibles, bottom line.
Oh, I think so.
If we're expecting it to be more than that and we're trying to budget it actual, then how many do we need, four, eight?
Well.
I mean, it could be zero, but.
My, my understanding, i- if memory serves me correctly, we only had two or three insurance deductible claims. We have small claims that are underneath that deductible, but I don't think that we had very many that crossed that threshold. I would be comfortable with two deductibles at this point, um, but obviously that's a, that's a moving number.
Yeah, I mean, you never know if you're gonna head a deer or somebody's on the.
Right.
Back into something, it happens, those are big vehicles, especially the new trucks now, so.
Obviously, going from ninety-five to one forty-eight, that's, that's a very big number.
And all departments.
One forty-eight is just the insurance amount on, on their, on EMS vehicles, okay.
There is, I'm just gonna put this caveat out here, I'm still waiting for not-not to confirm up the additional coverage for, um, the buildings for the hail and wind, right? I do have the place number in there that they gave us the estimate, and then also on cyber, I do have that, but the, it won't be out of his budget. I mean, I probably should share the cost, but I have not done that, so.
So I don't wanna get too far off track, but obviously, a fifty thousand dollar plus increase in our insurance premium. Makes me want to explore other options, and I had mentioned this to Debbie a, a few months back. Um, we were approached by a vendor who has a, um, warning and monitoring package for vehicles. So basically what that is, it's a camera monitoring system that faces both forward side and the driver. And in that, it is constantly monitoring, um, their speed, G-forces, brake. Um, it's, it's like, you know, the insurance, you get the safe driver discount if you put the monitor in your car, it's basically that on steroids. It has AI features where it will, um, remind the driver or awake the driver if it detects them yawning or dozing off. It will detect if they're on their phone or anything like that. Obviously, something of that comes with a fairly large price tag. However, I was wondering if we could approach our insurance company, because I do know, you know, especially on the auto side, when you install these things in your car. That you get a pretty significant discount. So I don't know if that's something that we want to look at and explore, and I don't even know if, um, they, they are offering that, or if they could offset some of the cost upfront, but, um.
We've hit them very hard in the last year, and I, I don't think they're gonna move off their premium cost for the upcoming year. But we can definitely look into it with the, the current carrier.
Yeah, I don't think it's a bad idea to look into it anyway, just, just to try to make it safer.
What's the approximate cost when you said it's significant?
Um, I think all in all, um, we're probably looking at, I'd have to go back, in eighty to a hundred thousand dollars for the equipment. And then there's an annual service fee as well that is probably in the fifteen thousand dollar range for all of the features. Now, this is pretty substantial in that, um, you know, i- it does a lot more than just monitoring your driving, right? So it also has the HOS system integrated, which is, um, anytime we have our emergency lights activated and you're approaching a vehicle that has CarPlay, um, OnStar, any of those. It'll pop up the alert that says emergency vehicle approaching. It has, you know, all the wireless monitoring, I can see at any point in time where our trucks are, how fast they're going. So i- it's a very robust system, and I don't know the exact numbers, if you give me a few minutes when we shift off, I can give you a little bit better idea of what that quote is. But, um, it is something that could potentially increase our safety profile. But I feel like if we're gonna make that investment, the insurance company should probably recognize that a little bit.
And that quote is for all of our equipment, all of our ambulances?
It would be all of the EMS vehicles.
Good question, if, if you're gonna be checking into, uh, this type of system, uh, what about buying a driving simulator? I was thinking about doing one for the sheriff's department, uh, but it's too expensive for one entity, but you might be able to get something that would not only be for, it could be every, every department in the county. You could set up, it's an electronic system that you sit down, it would have to be a pretty diverse system, and now I know that they have the emergency response ones, so the EMS and us. But I don't know if it would be something that you could go as far as public works, uh, health department, and I don't know if we could get a system like that. But that would also adjust maybe some of our insurance, uh, vehicle insurance if we were to get the driving simulator for all employees. And I can say it's expensive, but I don't think it's a hundred thousand dollars, but I don't know what the difference in the, uh, if it'll affect the premium as much as what he's talking about. I, I don't know the difference, I don't know the.
Debbie, so just check with.
I can reach out.
Just check.
I just want you guys to be aware, last year we took about a thirty-four percent increase, next year it's about the same. You know, higher deductibles are happening, they happened last year, they're going up again this year. So, you know, maybe, maybe we just carry liability insurance, we don't do collusion anymore, there's lots of suggestions to how to move this around to help the counties. But we gotta watch our liability, our exposure. Yes, Travelers does a great job of having education for risk management and to try to keep, you know, making sure their counties are doing it. They actually had a meeting with some of our departments this year too, so that was very, they are a great company to deal with that way, so they're on top of it. But I will definitely ask them about this.
I, I think, you know, the, we can see what maybe the cost would be, now, where do you realize the benefit?
Right.
One of the components of benefit ought to be reduced premiums, but that's, of course, that's up to Travelers or whoever.
Right.
And the other one is, uh, you know, we incur expenses on every accident, whether or not Travelers does, so that's the other offset.
Right. And we're eating a lot of those costs already.
Right.
The, the ones that are under that amount.
So it's worth looking.
It's look, it's worth looking into, it's probably too late this year to, to try to nudge Travelers off their number based on us going to do something.
Compared to the other bids that we got, you know, I don't think they're gonna.
Right.
So, circling back, the, the total number to install this into our fleet, which is twenty vehicles, would be a hundred and fifteen thousand six eighty. And of that, the yearly recurring fees are fifteen thousand six hundred dollars. So, um, basically you're looking at a hundred thousand dollar one-time investment to install and purchase the hardware. And then a recurring cost of fifteen thousand dollars every year. Now, that is a big number, however, um, I would be very interested in doing that if there is some realized benefit. I don't know that, um, there are much cheaper options, you know, we put dash cams in all of our new vehicles now. It does not have the robustness of any of this technology, um, so there are much cheaper options that protect us. So if we're gonna go down this path, I think I'd, I'd want to know that there's going to be some value received from the insurance companies on this.
And again, that value is only as good as a year at a time.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'll check into that, but just wanted to make you aware of that, so I would suggest forty-two on the first line, then we go to fifty-eight on the autos, a hundred and fifty.
One fifty-eight, yeah.
One fifty-eight, and then the liability is going up to twelve thousand, but.
So then you agree that two is a good number?
Yeah, forty-two is fine.
Two claims over the deductible price.
Put it in the autos, the ten thousand, adding it to the premium of the one forty-eight, making that.
Okay, but you agree that we do have several accidents, but only probably a couple of them exceed the five thousand dollar deductible threshold?
We'll keep our fingers crossed. Yeah, that too.
Yeah, so, um, I, I will say that.
Then do we need to budget fifteen or twenty if it's?
Well, and do we need to budget a twenty-five thousand if it happens, right? We don't know that kinda stuff, so we can depend on our contingency, and that is what it's there for.
I was just hearing you say two didn't sound like it was enough, so I was wondering, do we go to fifteen or twenty?
You said that's what you had in the past.
Chief said, we've only had two, so.
So, I, yeah, I mean, I, I think in, in my couple of years, we've been around the two to, to three in, in accidents or events that qualify to turn in and, and, um, pay the deductible. So I think that that's a reasonable number. It may be my year where, where we are significantly, uh, above that, but.
I understand all that, I'm just saying that we're talking even about the interest, trying to have a, a true number as possible, and I would have even went lower on it and been even more conservative. But I don't disagree with trying to be as close as what we can forecast, so, I'm, we're getting way down in weeds on this, if you guys are okay with two.
At this point, I'm gonna go with his, we have a long list of accidents, but I can't remember.
So, so I will say, whatever we budgeted this year for that deductible, there is still money in that account.
If we hit five deer next year and we exceed it, I'm not gonna say I told you so.
Yes, well, fair.
I was just asking on this one, I, I didn't mean for it to be this much of a discussion.
Right.
And we'll firm up these numbers, okay, once we get the confirmation from Travelers.
Let's just say we settle on two as the number, and, and the fir- the first one happens, and you have a consultation with that employee, but it's mild. The second one happens, it's a little more un-mild, and when you get to the third or fourth person, you, you say, you should've had your accident earlier in the year, because.
Or at least hit an insured vehicle.
Right.
Yes.
I, you know, deer is where we struggle with the most, but thankfully, we have a much more robust deer system on our newer ambulances, so.
And to do repairs is unbelievable.
Hold on a minute. Knowing these ambulances were built in Osage County, I can understand why there's better deer detection devices on them.
Those are cattle bumpers on the front, those are deer dogs.
They are, but that is, um.
Are, are there any, let's skip salaries, um, any other line items? Any other line items on pages one twenty and one twenty-one that either Chief Hollywood's bring up first that you think need to be amended, or if you have any questions about it?
I think of of the four budgets that I have prepared, this one is, really proud of the effort that we did to to come up with this. I I feel that this is a very responsible budget, um, and realistic on what we can achieve. You know, against against my internal, uh, feelings, when when my folks say, you know, we can't, this is the number, this is what it is in today's world. You know, I always want to challenge them to, uh, make it less, but I believe that this is a true budget, reflective of what it's going to take us to operate next year. Barring another thousand call increase.
Questions?
On the refund line, just to to drill in the weeds a little bit, uh, anytime you, there's a refund, there was already some money collected ahead of that, right?
What what happens, um, is the, uh, the insurance company will send out an explanation of benefits to, uh, the, to the patient, just similar to go into the doctor's office, you know, across it, it says, this is not a bill, please do not pay. Well, um, some folks ultimately end up making those payments. And then, once the claim works through the insurance process, the insurance pays again. So that refund is then issued back to, uh, the patient and to to make them hold for for their overpayment.
Anybody else, anything else? Oh, I wanted to ask you, you contingency, and this, you know, we transfer money in to kind of balance this. Do you like the one fifty number?
Yeah.
Do you think about it?
You know.
Should we give it a little more, any reason to give it a little more cushion, or you good, you good with that?
So.
It would just mean transferring a little more from the sales tax fund.
Right, right.
Into EMS enterprise to make up the difference, that's all that would.
Historically, it was about half a million dollars is is what we were putting into that contingency. And we were barely using any of it. The difficulty in this year is that we had that thousand call increase. So we did eat through that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The the problem is, in twenty twenty-four's budget, not only did we plan for the twelve thousand four hundred calls for service, we made our budget as lean as we we possibly could because we knew the building was was going on. So the fact that we were able to absorb all those increased operating costs in roughly, you know, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in contingency, I think speaks to, uh, some good fiscal management. But this budget is based on running those thirteen thousand five hundred calls for service. I believe that we've gone through and really analyzed what that costs. And as long as we don't have more explosive call growth, I think a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is plenty.
So are you guys wanting to tackle salaries right now, and or do you have any questions about what he's proposing here and what Mark has in there?
I think we ought to go ahead and dive in here on on this.
Let's do that, and then when we get done, then we've got the the assessment.
Okay, so we're gonna talk about salaries now?
Yeah, we're talking salaries, what we got in here?
Budget, okay.
So, uh, I briefly touched on the salary proposal last week. Basically, what this is in in overview is eliminating the two lowest steps in the salary pro- or salary scale, shifting everybody up, and then adding three additional years to the top of the salary scale. Overall, this represents about an eleven and a half percent increase in our salary line, oh, and excuse me, adding the two, uh, communications positions recommended by the study. So together, both of those options represent an about eleven point one-two percent increase. Seven point three five percent of that is, uh, the increase to the salary and benefits. To offset some of that, uh, we are proposing, as I explained, the elimination of holiday double pay and moving back to a policy that is in line with other county departments. The proposed salary scale, Commissioner Helschur challenged me to come up with the overall percentage. The way it kind of works is you get, um, a larger sum, uh, step your first year, and then it compounds a little bit slower each year thereafter until year five, which then you start gaining again, uh, several large steps until you get to year ten, which is that final big boost to get you to the top of the pay scale. There was a lot of conversation about what do we do with the, once we've reached the top of the pay scale? I think, um, when we are discussing a salary range that tops out, um, where it does, that we are very competitive. And the mechanism that I would challenge people is that if you reach the top of the pay scale and you still are striving for additional pay, that there are always ways to promote and, um, unlock the next step. I do strongly believe that at some point, we have to limit the county's financial obligations. You know, if you have a paramedic started age, uh, you know, twenty years old, and they top out at thirty at eight, eighty-five thousand dollars, if we continue to give them colas, they they in realistically could be making a very substantial salary, quite possibly with overtime of the highest paid employee in the county. So I think it's important that at some point, we cut it off. If there's a desire to to go longer or go higher, or whatever it may be, that's fine, but I do believe for a budgeting and forecasting purposes that there does have to be a ceiling at each level, so.
And we did try that the last time, and there was seven steps, and that did not stop. They continued to get the colas, so just giving you some perspective on that.
You're proposing, how colas after they hit the very top of the ten-year?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know if I necessarily am crazy about that, and thanks for giving me the information.
Yeah.
I was looking at it because when we first did the seven step, it was heavy loaded on the front end. Try to get them, retain them for the first couple of years, hopefully they're not job jumping. And then, once we have them, it slows down in the middle, and then it picks back up in the end. Honestly, don't think you can tell them after ten years that you're you're frozen. That's personal, I think that's a bad message, but I just, I was looking at these percentages, and they're pretty low on the front end.
But it's substantially higher than what it currently is.
Yeah, so so across the board.
It was like four percent on the front end on the original one, because that's the, that's the two they got rid of was those percentages. They're making less on these colas than what they're gonna make if they just got a regular cola the county's getting.
What I'm saying, the first step.
Two point four, two point two seven, two point four, one point nine nine on some of them, and we're we're projecting, uh, two point two plus five hundred. So they're taking less of the raise, it is, it's not jiving to me.
The the point is, right, so on average, everybody, when I calculate this out, will receive about a six thousand dollar increase over the next six months. Then, on top of that, each step thereafter is the percentage listed here. So by cutting off and moving everybody in their current steps, everybody receives the equivalent of about two steps under this plan by July of next year. So you would see the base rate change in January, which is the equivalent of one step. They would get their additional step in July. So overall, in the next year, they would receive about a six thousand dollar raise and then two percent or whatever the appropriate salary step is after that.
That's because we're going to raise the starting pay.
Right.
But somebody coming in is starting to make that, and in their first year, they only get a two point two percent raise, an E M T and dispatcher's two point four. I I know what you're saying, though, that the ones we have now are getting a significant jump, that's six percent. The two, the two steps that were eliminated, they're already getting that jump. And essentially, the the new people would be too. But I don't know, just that just, after your first year, anybody new that we hired, it just doesn't seem like. I I'd just say, just give me the same color, whatever the county's gonna get.
You know, I think the the exchange for that is that, once you hit that year five, you're going to be making, in theory, substantially more in in those raises at four percent year over year than historically what the county cola has been, except for one or two years, uh, during the height of inflation. So I I think it is a balancing act, that what we'd like to do is really encourage folks to to stay and strive and, get to the top of the pay scale. The other piece is, these numbers, um, you know, i- if a year four, my my two and a half percent raise, or whatever it is, we also have to look at what everybody else is doing around us. So even though I only am getting two and a half percent here, it's still going to be substantially more than what I would do and make if I were to go somewhere else and start over on the pay scale. So I I'm all for giving people more money, if you want me to go back and revise these up, I.
So I think that if, in the first four or five years, that's when we need to be striving to keep them. And once they get here that long, they'll want to stay, but I just don't think we're doing it upfront. I'm for a pay scale, I like it, I think they have an idea of what to look forward to. If you want to try this, I'm probably not going to say no to it, I just, it just didn't make as much sense to me. I'm just giving you an outside view.
Yeah, no, one hundred percent.
We've probably got three different opinions up here of it, too, so, or twelve of them in this whole room.
Now, some of that is self-serving in the fact that by moving the current folks this year and and giving that across the board, very large increase, that has a very large impact on our budget this year. So y- you would double down by front-loading, that number would increase substantially this year, but then have less hits in future years. And some of that is self-serving in that trying to balance the budget and make this work is that we needed to give a large increase, but the return on that is the first steps on the front end need to be a little bit lower to give us a time to continue to, um, offset that with increased revenue and sales tax and all of those other sorts of things. I don't know that we could do a huge or a large bump upfront and then front-load it with large percentages. I think that rate of of expenditure would not balance with the growth in in forecasted revenue, so.
And I'm I'm not crazy about stopping it at ten years either, just, so if you've, we've got, surely we've got some E M Ts and paramedics that have been here for nine years.
Yeah.
So if, I mean, and we went through this with public works, too. If I'm an operator, and I don't want to go learn how to operate this other equipment, I'm fine doing this smaller equipment, then I shouldn't get punished at the end of nine years and not getting raises.
Well, I I agree with you, Jeff. But realistically, I would bet within three years, four years at the most, you'll be here making some kind of adjustment anyway, so. But I I do agree with you, Friesen, at ten, I don't think, but I think that'll change somewhere down the road.
I I I concur, I I think it's it's fine to say we're gonna stop it at ten, but I think outside forces, uh, competition will make us move the the, uh, the number.
Right.
And then, you know, if you have, start having turnover that you don't like, you can't live with, it'll push us in a, you know, another direction. But I'm good with it going forward. I made a note last week, uh, under the twenty twenty-five budget office officer number. This number gives Chief his ask. Right?
Correct, so.
Nothing's changed with the rat.
This is only a half a year.
I I said at the first budget hearing, I I was, my, what I was doing with other departments is leaving them where they were, plus cola. I misunderstood what option two was.
Sure.
Versus your proposal versus the actual pay. I thought we were staying the same.
Sure.
With option two, I, that's my fault, that's my fault.
Well, we we.
If I was treating him like other departments, that my recommended number would be lower. My my would be about it. Last year's budget plus three percent.
Sure, sure.
So I I missed, I missed the boat on that, so. I was trying to treat all departments the same.
Yeah, but I I completely understand that. And but you you are correct in that, in order to implement the plan as presented, the numbers in the budget officer's budget are correct.
Okay.
And I do want to say the two in communications, but really, there was three more that was going to be added this year for the extra ambulance, right?
Yeah, those were already added in, and and that is accounted for in this number, since those positions were already approved. Those are included in this number, I'm not asking for additional. The only two communicators is is what is changing from today.
So that number just changes quite a bit because those extra three were not in there this year for the full year.
Correct.
Three, plus two more.
Approved those a month ago.
A a couple of months, yeah.
So.
But just to expand, finish my thought, I'm not saying I'm opposed to.
Sure.
Increases, you you've been experiencing, seems like I've been signing off on pay forms a little more in this past year for your department than previous years, so I think you have been experiencing turnover. Certainly, there's been other departments, I look at one in particular, trying to address their turnover, so I understand that, I'm not opposed to you going with this, just, I just wanted to explain this. And I think your budget is overall fiscally sound, the the fees have gone up, sales tax is consistent, so. I I didn't want to say I'm opposed to this, just just wanted to explain how that got in there, so.
And I think the other piece that I want to highlight is that I did work with Sheila, she does have all of the information. We did perform a salary study of similarly located and similarly sized agencies, and we are at the very bottom end of of that range. So, um, this this moves us to the upper third. You know, I don't think that the way our sales tax is constructed and the appetite of our community that that we really want to be the folks out front. But I think it's always good to be a step or two behind them, especially when you're looking at, um, some of the other similarly sized agencies, whether it's Johnson County, south of the metro, or some of the areas, uh, you know, or in in the St. Louis metro. We we can't afford to pay what they pay, but if we are in the same boat, that that puts us in a very good position, so.
And we already pull staff from those areas historically?
So if we do the salary proposal, how many do you have that are going to be past the nine and ten year?
Uh, so.
Is this gonna be somewhere we have to address tomorrow?
No, so so basically, where we where we end up with this is through all of the different salary changes, even though we have folks like, um, you you know, that have been here for for several, you know, almost decades now, um, starting with the hospital. Because this scale has moved so much, um, they aren't necessarily at the top in in terms of years. So we still have, uh, another year before somebody hits that year ten, so so they would still get another step raise. It's a very convoluted system, but what I can tell you is that everybody will be receiving a substantial raise. The, um, folks at the top of the pay scale will still have another year before they get to year ten, even though that doesn't make sense based on their length of history. But since we're moving the salary scale up, they are still receiving a raise, they just aren't at the top yet, so. Yes, people will top out, um, either, uh, at the beginning, at with their next step raise, so, um, So, it, it is, it is something. But again, when you, when you look at this from where they sit now, to that eighty-five thousand dollar mark is about a ten percent, or a ten thousand dollar raise in what they're making in their hourly rate today, so.
Sam, I've only signed the years of service, you had one. It was ten.
There, there are certainly folks that, that have been with the organization. You know, I, I think, you know, when you talk about guys like Dak and Brian Thompson and AJ, you know, they, they have twenty-plus years of service with the organization through its various peaks and valleys. But again, this does represent a substantial raise for all of them.
Is it like the same for every position, or is it a percentage for each position? Cause you eliminated, eliminated the two steps, so that was, those are pretty substantial amounts on the seven-step chart.
Yep.
And then we go to a ten, so I didn't know if it took away from some of that or all that was upfront to get them to step two? And that incorporates a eight percent raise for everybody this year there?
Yeah, so, so basically, what you would be doing is you're taking, um, you would take, let, let's say you're a new EMT. Today, your salary is, is forty thousand dollars. At the first of the year, you would go to forty-four thousand dollars. And then in July, you would get your next step raise. So, but by July one, you would have gone from forty thousand dollars to forty-five thousand dollars.
So, you're wanting to implement this grid at one-one, and then the-
Correct, yes.
And to reiterate, this does do away with double time-
Correct.
Um, on the holiday pay. So, that's gonna affect some of the salary line, too, that's already built in.
They're gonna bank it right now.
He said he wants to be similar to the rest of the county and specifically mentioned sheriff last week.
Yep.
So, that basically was ten percent jump from forty to forty-four-
Mm-hmm.
To start, so if the EMT came in today, it'd be forty, or if he comes in January one, it'd be forty-four.
Correct.
Keeping the dates, so.
So, so really, when we look in total, i- if you are with our organization today as an EMT at the bottom step, by July one, you would receive about a twelve percent increase in the next six months.
Is that pretty much all the way across the board then?
Yes.
Like the same number, so captains?
Yeah.
Deputy chief?
Probably, yeah.
From the bottom to the top then?
Correct, yes. Now, w- when you look at paramedics, the, the pay scale tops out with a higher percentage increase than, than what EMTs are, and that's just market factor. I mean, you know, a, a, as much as we wanna be uniform, and I believe we're close, there, there are just certain market factors that require me to pay a paramedic more than an EMT on that, when we get to the top, you know. Other agencies top out, you know, probably right, maybe a little bit less than what our EMTs are, but there are certainly agencies that pay paramedics substantially more than eighty-five thousand dollars a year, so.
And when I say one-one, I don't really mean one-one.
Yeah, it's the first pay period.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, one of your commandments at your organization now is thou shalt not, if you're an EMT and a paramedic, thou shalt not work twelve-hour shifts.
Correct, we don't do, well, th- they can work in twelve-hour increments of overtime, but we do not schedule anybody for twelve-hour periods.
And is that the industry standard?
It, it depends on, on all sorts of factors. How many stations you have, how you deploy those units, how many calls they're running in a period, all of those sorts of things. We have taken tremendous strides over the last two years to get everybody on the same schedule, get everybody on the same pay scale, and eliminate some of these practices that were very, very cumbersome. The last remaining bit of that is this holiday double time.
I see HR nodding here.
It is cumbersome.
So, again, getting back to a system that not only pays them well, but is uniform with other county departments is something that we really want to strive for.
We're getting close, John.
And I don't know if you wanna vote on it today, but if you have any other questions, we can talk about it, or you can vote on it, whatever.
They don't necessarily have to vote on anything. You approve the final budget on January seventh, so, I mean, you just tell us your, if you're okay to move forward-
I'm gonna support-
As is, or, or do you wanna make any changes?
But I will bring this group back.
Well, the changes I've, I've heard today deal with the vehicle insurance, what line it's on, how many deductibles, we've kinda settled on that. We're not changing the, the Budget Officer Number for compensation for personal service.
It might change some based on current, what?
Doing part of it at the beginning and then part of it in July.
Oh, oh, that's not-
I don't know if that's in there.
No, that's built in, that's built in.
Oh, that's built in, okay.
It's built in, so the, the-
But, I always ask every department where, before the final numbers go in, is there any, like, make anything different?
You, you know, one of the big changes, if, if somebody at the top of our pay scale decides to retire and we replace them with a, with a, with an EMT, you know, that's a savings of, you know, almost forty thousand dollars. So, I, I can't say that, that the numbers are going to be exactly the same, but if the budget is approved as presented by the Budget Officer, all of this would be included in that.
Basically, if you're okay with his salary proposal-
I am.
The number shouldn't change, like I said, could, like I said, some, an unexpected retirement or something-
Could, could change the number slightly, but not-
I was concerned about the, you know, the big jump. But on the other hand, I think we wanna be competitive. We wanna keep the best people and provide the best service. I think you've gotten rid of the holiday pay or made some adjustments there. I know there might be some people grumbling because you guys are getting bigger raises. I guess I would probably just encourage them to go get their paramedics license and EMT license and apply. I mean, it is a big jump, but we definitely wanna be able to keep our people. And if you're comfortable with this salary proposal, then-
I, I think it's something that is reflective of the increase in revenue, which is reflective of the increase in work and responsibility that we're repla- we're placing on our folks. So, as I said at the beginning of all this, and, you know, this, I, I don't wanna diminish other departments, but as an agency, we are unique in that our budget is self-sustaining. So, this salary proposal does not require any additional funds from, or any funds for that matter, from general revenue. This is us reallocating the funds that we are receiving and investing in our people. So, that is one of the nice mechanisms of the way our budget is structured, but it, it does lend itself to be a little bit more unique than other county departments.
I remember a time not that long ago with your predecessors where we didn't have enough paramedics to man our ambulances. So, if this is what it takes to operate a successful nine-one-one EMS operation, so be it.
And to maybe eliminate or ease Commissioner Helscher's concerns is that if we do get somebody to the top of the pay scale, and as we approach that year's budget, if there is a desire to continue to give a cost-of-living adjustment, then that's certainly something that you can explore on a case-by-case basis. This is, again, just trying to give us something that we can plan and fiscally forecast for to know what the top number actually is.
Yep.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's go back to our regular agenda quickly because we have the Assessor's Office here. And we will let, go back to our regular agenda. Assessor's Office to present error, errors and omission correction for parcel ten dash zero one dash zero two dash zero 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 three dash zero zero four dash zero three zero.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Cole County Assessor's Office, Residential Real Estate Department. There are omissions pertaining to seventy-seven oh seven Spring Station Road. We are making a correction in a doubtful directory to three hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred, and that was due to a miscalculation. And on, on address twenty-six forty-three Drew's Perry Road, we, the error omissions is to correct, removing the land that is part of a homeowner association. The land is, so we're removing it from that particular parcel.
So, are you doing this one first?
Okay, that one's the second one.
The second? Did you give them one to sign?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, I've got it.
Uh, the first one I was speaking of, that is zero nine zero eight two seven zero 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 three zero one six. And that's the one we're doing a, a structure value correction in the amount. And the amount would be three hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred. And the next one is one zero zero one zero two zero 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 three zero zero four zero three zero, and that pertains to remove the land because the land is owned by a homeowner's association.
Okay, I, I don't think I have a question, but I'll make a comment. Let's see, the first one, the, the taxes go from fifty-one sixty-seven, five thousand one sixty-seven and change, down to four thousand two thirty-three and change. So, there's a reduction in taxes due on this one, right?
Yes.
Okay. And on the second one, it's a hundred and ninety-eight dollar and fifty-six cent change in taxes due. And of course, those taxes are spread across Jefferson City, the city, state of Missouri, county of Cole, school district, Cole County Residential Services, and so on and so forth. Every, every political subdivision gets a modification of a, of a piece of that.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm ready to make a motion. Do, do it in one motion, both parcels, okay? I'll make a motion to accept the errors and omissions as reported by the Assessor's Office on the two parcel numbers as listed on those two schedules.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time, Commissioners.
Thank you.
He's still here?
He was on the call.
Who?
Bill.
I brought Farming.
I can tell you my-
Then we can go into the sheriff.
It'd be easier if you just say you agree with what I said, and then we can just go to the next person.
Okay, we, we can. I just figured Bill's probably not gonna be, do we lose it?
Yes.
Okay, Sheriff, you're on.
Oh.
Let's go over the song.
Let's go.
I've already presented the two, two positions that I want. One of them, I think, can be paid for with opioid monies. The other one would be a sergeant position for the Community, Community Services Division. The numbers that the auditor gave out-
Starts on one oh one.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. It's, it's a long budget, over several pages, but his, starts on one hundred.
The numbers are actually not right that the auditor gave, and it's not because of him. It's because I gave the wrong request. Instead of asking for the sergeant position, I asked for an SRO. So, there's probably about twenty-five thousand dollars difference or so, thirty thousand dollars difference in the two. So, that's the, I mean, I, I could go through my request again if you would like, but the corporal down in the jail would, could be funded with opioid money, assisting drug court, as well as assisting the individuals with opioid addiction. And then also as a classification officer. And then the Community Services Sergeant, we'd be doing a plethora of things added to his duty assignment, so. Other than that, I agree with everything that he's put down.
Okay, couple of things. You're asking for, okay, first of all, you're asking COLAs, you're okay with the COL- you're-
Yes, sir.
You're not asking for anything over and above-
No.
The COLAs for any position?
No.
Okay. Second, uh, two, the two new positions you're asking for, one to be potentially funded by opioid money, which Jill is okay, agrees that that would qualify.
That's correct.
Okay. And the other new position is how much, you said, different than what I put in here?
Right now, what I'm wanting to do is move Kyle Rinnick. He's a sergeant in the SROs right now, and I wanna move him to the sergeant position in Community Services. He would still be supervising the SROs, but he'd also have several additional duties on top of that.
Okay, so that'd be an extra, what'd you say, twenty thousand?
Well, he gets, I think his base salary is seventy-five, so whatever that, whatever that would be with benefits, I don't know the answer to that.
Oh, okay.
So, starting to pay for a sergeant is seventy-one. I think currently, he is making seventy-five.
So, yeah, as far as salaries, I wanna revisit, I just thought of this one. Are you still, you've got the one part-time who, they initially agreed to pay it with marijuana money, but I think now you wanna put all the marijuana money on hold, so you will continue to pay that?
You already agreed, so you can't go back on it.
There's a judge, there's a judge that told us to slow down.
Yeah, okay. Pesky constitution.
But that would be another change from your original because of the-
Yes.
The putting a hold on any spending of the marijuana money for now, so.
So, then the position we're funding with the opioid money, is that end when the opioid money runs out?
Ten or more years.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're-
I mean, that doesn't mean, but that's a long ways off.
Yeah.
Kinda like EMS ten-year cap. We're, we're expecting opioid money for at least-
I'm looking at a long ways off. I mean, we're gonna be broken in some years, and I don't wanna hand off this position to somebody else and put him in a position to fail like that, so.
So, we'll, we'll observe that.
I'm just gonna say, I'm not for adding any people right now. And we briefly talked about it, Sheriff. I, I know you've got some open positions, and do we move somebody from one of the open positions to these, fill them, and then try to fill the other positions, but we-
Well, the, the problem is, is the staffing right now, I wouldn't be willing to do that. And the reason why, just for instance, this past week, we had two inmates that was at MUPC. I had four people tied up at Columbia, and that's including travel time and all that. That's a hundred and ninety-two hours that my staff had to provide just in that week. Today, when accurate controls went down, which they're back up now, we had, we held over the night shift, so that was another twelve hours that, of overtime that's gonna come out of our budget. So, if we, if we, if I end up moving somebody, and we're close to being full, if I end up moving somebody from those positions, then it's gonna, it's just gonna impose more overtime. So, I would, I would not be willing, if, I mean, if that's the difference is I gotta give up a position for it, then I don't want the position.
See, we're, we're restricted on what we can use opioid money for. Do you wanna just let it sit and draw interest, or do, I mean- Do you want to just let it sit and draw interest, or do, I mean?
We'll find something for it, and just not want to use it for staffing. And I know it's, maybe it's ten years down the road when you run out, or maybe it's seven, or, or whatever, but
Let's back up.
You know that position's not going to disappear when that money disappears.
Then we'll absorb it.
Just like this marijuana money didn't.
We'll absorb the money.
We don't have money to absorb it with. We're running out of money. I mean, you're wanting more money from the general revenue fund, you know, when that money runs out. And we got, well, we had two point oh eight million is what we said we would do when this was on the ballot. Last year, you asked for us to increase it by the cost of living or the whatever. And, you know, I didn't agree to that either because our sales tax has gone up significantly over the last five years. So, we should be able to live within our means.
I'm going to back up on the opioid, opioid discussion. So, how much opioid money have we collected thus far?
Three, four hundred thousand.
Let's see, I could go to that, that's like one hundred, one twenty seven currently, but
All the way down to the bottom.
I'm going to put it in a separate fund.
Since we have it right at around two hundred thousand right now is what Mark's last email.
Five, six, seven, ten.
Doesn't say what we've spent, though. We've spent some with the EMS and printer.
The question, what have we taken in? Let's see, was twenty three the first year? That was thirty one thousand, or did it go back?
I've had one thing I'm just
I can't remember. No, we got a payment very, at the end of twenty twenty two. Okay, so we're seventy five thousand in twenty twenty two. What did I say, thirty one thousand? In twenty twenty three?
Thirty one, you said?
Thirty one. Thirty, yeah, thirty one. So, that's one oh six, and then whatever we got. This year, we got quite a bit so far, it's a pretty big number, I think. Two hundred and fourteen, almost two hundred and fifteen thousand so far this year, so. So, your question is, what have we received to date, two ninety? About three hundred and twenty, three hundred and twenty one thousand.
So, one oh six was the first year?
No, that's first two years.
Yeah, first two years.
Well, first year, kind of. The, the payment, their payment came very end of twenty twenty two. See, I thought that was about the first year.
Yeah, I think it's a good reuse for some of this money. It still leaves us
I'm just, I'm just going to do some projections now. So, three twenty one has been collected since it started, and that'll take us through the end of this year.
Yeah, I don't think we'll get any more at the end of this year.
Okay, what's the projections going forward? If we settled in, there's a couple of companies paying right now. There's more than one payor.
Uh, yeah, we pay
There's more than one drug company paying in.
Oh, yeah.
So, and
Debbie, I think Debbie's going to get more.
They may have varying life spans. Some are up for seven years, some are for ten.
And then there's new that haven't started paying in yet.
So, we've gotten three twenty one in, and how much of that have we spent on something?
I just sent you an email with the breakdown.
Email I had from before, we had a hundred and six thousand spent by EMS, I think. Is that the only one we had, Debbie?
I just sent you an email with the breakdown.
Grand total expense or incurred was one twenty seven, so remaining balance is one ninety four.
Yes.
So, that's the same as what you sent us before. That's what I was going off of.
We may have paid a few bills to juvenile, but it's pretty close.
And I'm just trying to come up with a revenue stream going forward, round numbers.
It's, it's very unpredictable.
It's really up and down.
Jill might know.
Locked in to up my amount, and they agree to pay X dollars on
Jill may know that, you know, what, where the, when those settlements happen, right, is when we get the money. And she has more insight on
So, TIVA, TIVA, TIVA payment one and two were both around seven grand.
Right, and how many?
CVS were both average eight grand. Allergen, eight grand. Walgreens, one of them's sixteen, and one of them's eight grand. Walmart payment one, eighty three grand. There's a distributor, distributor payment number four, twenty five grand. I don't know what they all are, but if you knew they were going to be a seven year thing, so you can project out. I, I see where you're going with it.
I'm just trying to say that we
I'm just odd man out on this one.
Yeah, well, over, over the next, let's just use ten years. Over the next ten years, we're going to collect this much money, and the sheriff wants this much of it. And then it's going to stop coming in, but he's going to continue to want that much. So, I think we're talking about twenty, what are we going to do in twenty thirty five? Oh, my God, we're going to have a problem in twenty thirty five, and we're all gone.
Jeff might still be here.
Okay, but I, I can see committing opioid money to this position for at least five years, probably at least ten years, and not be strapped. But at some point, you know, to your point, the, the money stops and the expense continues.
Yep, if I'm odd man out today, that is what it is, you know. John hasn't slashed my tires or I haven't had my truck pulled off yet, that I know of.
Day's not over.
So, we, we had a good conversation about it, and
I understand, I understand your thought process.
If we try to take some, you know, we don't do this, or I say fill it with another position, where do we take it from? We do have a lot of overtime, do we need a budget more overtime?
Well, I think it's up to the sheriff to, to find at some point, if, or his successor has to find a new revenue source to keep this position or drop the position. I do have a question for you, Sheriff. I think last week you, you mentioned that you were nine positions down, and you were going to make five offers on Friday. How did that turn out?
I did five offers. Since then, I had one resign, not the five that I offered. So, and they still have to get through the rest of the conditional offer process, and that's the drug test, voice stress analyzer, the PCP.
Those are all scheduled for Friday?
Yeah, they're all scheduled for Friday, so.
So, all those offers were made, and there's conditional, assuming they are at contingent upon successful?
Yes, and then there's two more civilian positions that we may be making offers to. They're talking about it right now, so hopefully they'll have an answer for me when I get back to the office.
Okay, so no train wrecks on Friday?
No, no train wrecks on Friday.
Again, I'm sorry.
I'm going to go to something else here in a second.
Salaries?
Uh, no, it's not on salaries.
Should we finish salaries?
I'm fine.
Is that okay with you? You kind of get your, again, it doesn't have to be, I don't think, there's no official votes today, but where are we going to move forward with this salaries? Are you?
Salaries are the two positions.
Yes.
Well, that's the only difference. I mean, otherwise, he's not asking for
I am good, I am good with, with the sheriff's request.
We can, we can be just around all day long if you want to, or we can just, I think you got the two.
Two okay's, Harry? You okay to move forward with the sheriff's request as presented?
I do like the positions too.
I understand.
We talked about that. I did like what they're going to be doing and stuff.
Oh, I completely learn your thought process. I mean, absolutely.
And I agree, I, I really, I agree with you. I agreed with you on EMS's ten years. I agree with, I, I know where you're coming from.
Okay, so we'll move forward
All right.
With this proposal. Again, the numbers, you know, they pointed out, we, in my numbers, I missed a couple, some stipends.
I think, I think that shouldn't, yeah, we'll, we'll get that one.
But it, it'll change a little, but it won't, it won't have any significant effect, the final, final numbers, so. Okay, all right, okay.
Did you have another question, Harry?
I want to talk about board of prisoners and federal prisoners, probably.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I thought we had a, Debbie, didn't we have a huge board bill this last month or two?
Yeah, we've been paying Montauk County quite a bit of money for
Yes, I'm housing thirty, or, I'm housing out right now, twenty nine right now, I think I'm housing out.
And most of them are in Montauk.
How many did you have?
Nope, I have
How many was it?
Down someplace.
Twenty eight.
I have eighteen in Montauk County, I believe, three in Osage County, and five, I think, in Pulaski County.
You know, there's such a, a high hidden cost, I think, in boarding prisoners. Not only that, you know, the dollar, the check we write to those counties, it's the incurred overtime and transportation. And then if you've got somebody sitting in Pulaski, but the judge wants to see him, or that thing has popped up, you got to send two guys down there to pick up maybe one.
Yes, sir.
And maybe you'll get to not have what you'd call deadhead miles because you take one down and, and trade out, maybe.
Right.
The logistics involved with that is just, man, I don't know. Your scheduler or your, whoever that guy is, that, he's probably pulling, you look like you pulled your hair out over this.
It comes out by itself since I've been taking this job.
I think that other guy is
I'm hoping that the jail discharge planner will be able to assist in, in, in doing that too. So, and be able to keep track of, because the sergeants do a good job, transports do a good job at it. But the problem is, whenever you're housing prisoners out like that, you really got to keep an eye on the, the court dates and everything. Because what you don't want to do is give somebody a call and say, hey, look, I'm sorry it's four in the morning, but you got to go down to Pulaski County and pick up a prisoner because he's got, we forgot he's got court at eight.
Right.
So, if we have that, I'm hoping that discharge planner will be able to, that'll be one of the functions that he'll be able to do, is streamline that process to make sure who we send out. And not only, not only do we want to make sure that we have the, we know when their court appearances are, but you also want to make sure that we classify correctly. Because what you don't want to do, if we send one of our problem inmates to another, another county, they won't take our inmates anymore. So, we got to make sure that when we send somebody down there, and, and there has been times, I think recently, it was last week, Montauk County, we had a medical emergency with one of, one of our inmates there. They took them to CAP region, but we had to send a team there to take over for that, for that person. So, it was nice Montauk County to bring them to us, but we still, I mean, we still have to work together on it's, logistically, it's, it's, it's a problem. And I think this year, and I could be wrong because I have too many numbers swimming around in my head, but I think we were going to hit right at three hundred and thirty thousand this year.
Well, this is more like three, three fifty projected.
Yeah, but I, if, if, projected, yes, but I think we're going to hit three thirty.
Slowing down.
Yeah, it's slowing down a little bit because we did have twenty nine sitting at Montauk, and we only have, like I said, I can't find it now, but we, we only have eighteen or so there now.
Okay, let me ask a little bit about the, the federal prisoner. So, we, we've got a contract with the feds to take their prisoners at a, is it a price of like thirty, ninety three dollars a day? Or what is the?
Ninety.
Ninety, okay. So, you have to keep beds open for the feds?
No.
So, if they, and how many, up to, do they have a, do you have a maximum that you can handle on feds?
We told them that we could take up to forty.
Up to forty. So, there are forty beds over there that could be occupied by the feds. And if they're, if they're not, if they're not full, you're putting a regular prisoner in that bed if they fit the classification and so forth?
That's correct.
Okay. You know, a hotel never has a hundred percent occupancy all the time, and I guess a jail doesn't even
We can't.
You can't because you don't have the right mix of
That's correct.
So, is there some kind of built in vac, uh, vacancy? Is it ten?
So, we have, right now, we have an administrative, I call it an administrative number that we try to keep it at. So, we're at a hundred and seventy two inmates right now in our facility here. And we're going to move some because I like to keep it at one sixty. And the reason being is, at one sixty administratively, I can move prisoners around. So, if we start having, here recently, the B pod, which is our administrative segregation, it was full. So, we ended up having another one, and that's the jail within the jail because people are being unruly or not following rules. So, it depends upon what's going on inside the facility, on how many people we can house. So, as far as federal inmates right now, we have thirty seven.
Okay.
We talked to, just recently, we talked to the feds, and they said that we should, they should be moving a lot more cases now. So, we should be, start seeing an influx of federal inmates.
Is some of the influx due to a change in administration in Washington DC and moving people out of the country?
They, they didn't say it that way, but I would imagine that might be part of it.
So, you said we have forty beds maximum for them? If they would come to us and say, hey, we, we need forty five beds, or forty's our max?
No, forty's not the max. We just told them that we could take up to forty.
Okay, so we, so if they would come, they had fifty two?
But we've been over forty before.
Okay.
So, it just depends, especially when the federal court starts moving a lot of cases, they like to house them with us because we're close and we transport for them. That's part of our deal we made with them. So, it's, it's better for them if they're here because they don't have to worry about transports of the inmates there or back.
But you can't always take the next federal prisoner, even though you have a bed, because the next federal prisoner is, belongs in the pod B, and you don't have room in B because, you know, he's a bad, bad player, right?
That's a possibility, but we could, we could, we can't start, what we can't do for the feds is, is we can't say, we'll take him, but we're not taking him. So, once we get them and there's a continued issue, then the feds will address it.
Okay. Only because I like to play with numbers, it'd be, it's just kind of curiosity to me. If you take a hundred and eighty beds that you have, times three hundred and sixty five or three sixty six days, whatever there are in a year, you come up with a theoretical max and, and then compare that number to the actual beds occupied, day beds, and what that number might be. Is it ninety percent? Is it eighty percent?
That we have of the hundred and eighty?
No, of, of, yeah, of the hundred and eighty. Pure, pure max, perfect, perfect score would be one eighty times three sixty five. That's how many pillows, bed, whatever you want to call it, bed night. And then actual is, is some percentage of that, not a hundred, but is
Well, it's, we tried, like I said, we, I, I don't know what the percentage would be, but we try to keep it at one sixty.
Okay.
That, that's a hundred and sixty beds is what we try to keep it at. Now, that fluctuates up and down depending on, we could, like the one seventy two that we have today, the reason why we have one seventy two because eight of them could be going to court today. So, we'll hold them and let them go to court and see if they get released or if they can post bond or whatever. And then we'll see what happens after that. So, there's really no rhyme or reason. I, the administrative number that I've given them to work with is one sixty. And then if they go up from that, that's, that's the discretion of the jail administrator. I let him make that, that determination.
And I know we get that indirect cost study done every other year, and they come up with that, the average number of days per year for
And we can give you an average
Yeah, I can give you that report.
We can give you the average rate of booking. I don't have it with me, but I can get you that number.
Are we, are the feds a little behind on paying us on what we've been billing them?
No.
Because after nine months, we're at seven thirty three, seven thirty three thousand, but we're projecting a million two.
So, and I think if you look at, I think we're, I can't even remember.
Let me see, I can see where we're at right now.
Yeah.
They, they're usually, I, I say behind, but they're usually pretty prompt on when they pay, but I want to say it's two months, but I don't know that.
Do you book an accrual in there at the end of the year that, where we build them and have them collected yet?
Typically, I, I did, I think I'd question you. Typically, I, I did, I think I questioned you last week. It looked like you were, you were slow, and the federal prisoner revenue was down this year. But you, you think, you, you were just saying they're, they should be, uh, picking up case, their, you know?
Well, they had, we had a meeting, because we were at twenty-nine, I think, or thirty, and we had a meeting with them. And shortly thereafter, we went up to thirty-seven. So, and they, and they didn't do that because of our, of our conversation. Because in the conversation, they simply said, you're gonna see an increase in federal cases, so you should see a lot more prisoners coming through.
We're currently at nine hundred and fourteen thousand in federal prisoner revenue. Yeah, that projection's gonna be high, that one point two million is high. It, probably one more month to bill yet before the end of the year?
Yes.
That'll get booked in, DSNA, and, uh, I don't know, if that's, he does it right, or they, or at least it gets entered.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be overstated.
So, I think it'll be around a million, a little...
Yeah.
Uh, that, it's, you're running, normally been running around a hundred thousand a month. It's, it's been lower than that this year. But if, but if you get another hundred thousand, okay, let's say we're looking at about a million.
So, is a million three too optimistic for next year?
Well, that's what I was asking, that's what I was asking last week, but...
Well, I think I took the number, the number I, actually, the number you're, I used was thirty-seven, I think. And that's what I, I projected my, uh, twenty twenty-five budget on.
Thirty-seven times ninety?
Yes, sir. I sure hope I'm thinking right because I'm gonna look awful dumb here in a minute. Yeah, one point two. I think it'll be more than thirty-five, but...
That's a million two fifteen.
Sorry?
I come up with a million two fifteen if, uh...
And I think it'll be more than that, but...
Okay.
I mean, we can, we can drop it if you feel comfortable.
I'm, I'm okay with it, but just to caveat, it looks a little too optimistic.
I, I initially thought that, too.
I rely upon the sheriff's word that he feels like it's accurate.
I, and I'm, but now I'm glad you brought up paying for board prisoners. You know, we're, we're currently at paying out about two hundred and, I just had that number up too long. Bring that up again. Two hundred and ninety thousand. So...
With another round of payments to go?
There'll be another, you think? Uh, let's see, yeah, there should be at least one more round of payments.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that'll take us well over three hundred.
Yeah. But we're only budgeting forty thousand next year. I think that's too low. I know I asked you initially, you're optimistic you'd be able to get, not have to use as many, but I don't, I don't think we're going that way, to be honest with you. I, I think we got up your expense number for board prisoners quite a bit.
What, how much you wanna go up to? Two hundred.
Two hundred thousand, yeah. I, I really think we need to get that up there.
And on the revenue side, I'm not sure, um, I'm not sure the numbers from the state.
Yeah, it, it, that's been lagging behind some because of, especially the...
The reimbursement from the state.
Yeah, from the, for the court, yeah, because they're...
They...
They're not that far behind. I think we're a couple of months behind still, but they're, they're caught up.
The state pays you, what, twenty-three dollars a day?
Yes, but only for inmates that get found guilty of felony and go to DOC.
And their, and their time here counts for, against their sentence.
Yes.
I know it's limited, but still, it's only twenty-three dollars a day or something.
No, yeah, it's not.
Now, do we have somebody over there with, wearing a sandwich board with, in front of the governor's office, marching back and forth and saying twenty-three's not enough? Is there some, are you, are your guys?
We are, uh, we go and talk to the legislators about that. That's Department of Corrections, uh, they're not willing to come off that number, uh, at all. And, uh, so we, we are in conversations, not only myself, but the Missouri Sheriff's Association, several other sheriffs have been talking to them about, they should up that twenty-three dollars. Legislators really don't wanna talk about it, so, they agree, but that's about as far as it goes. So, the, our lobbyist up there is supposed to try on a, he's supposed to be trying to get a bill to try to increase that. But they've been trying to do that for the past five years, so I don't...
Well, there was a time that they didn't pay enough, and they didn't pay off.
They paid, yeah.
Yeah, they weren't paying.
They're, when, now, when we submit the bills, they pay the, they're, they're not, yeah, they, for a while, they were way behind on paying.
Well, I think, the good thing is, and I think Sandy Carson was, was part of this, they, they got it narrowed down to, uh, they, it was such a big, long process to get it done, and they got it down to a worksheet, so it, it works out a lot better now. I say a worksheet, I'm sure it's the state, it's not that simple, but...
They were using the FISH method of inventory of those bills. First in, still here.
Yes, and, yes, that is correct.
Now, we're, as we see, oh, probably within a month or so, after you, the court submits the bill?
Right.
We get paid, so, yeah.
And that's a process, I don't understand that process either, but, uh, we have to submit our paperwork to the, to the clerk, and then the clerk has to verify it and then send it to the state, and then we get paid. I don't know why we have to go through...
They need verification from the prosecutor, too. So, it, it takes them a little time to pull that all together because they gotta get in front of you.
Oh, I know it's time consuming, I've talked to Sparky about it, it's time consuming, hell, I get it, yeah.
I'll go ahead and, and talk about page one oh five, the insurance. Um, the sheriff is no exception to this big increase here. So, he does have it all in one line, so he's got the four hundred and thirty, about mid-page. It's probably gonna be more like, just the premiums is five twenty-four. I'd like to add another thirty thousand in there, I'd like to move that to five fifty-four.
Five fifty, that's a hundred and twenty-four more, if I'm looking at the right line.
That's right.
Five fifty-four.
It's four thirty right now.
Yeah.
And you're wanting to take it to five sixty?
Five, okay, we can do five sixty.
We, we met with the, um, representatives of travelers that were bringing us the numbers, right? Was that last Friday?
Um, they were all not-not employees.
Yeah, oh, I know, but I mean, it was travelers that...
Yes.
That's bringing the higher premium to us.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
And I do have that on the agenda, I think, for Thursday, tomorrow, actually.
Insurance tomorrow.
Yeah. If I have the figures, it'd be tomorrow, if not, we may have to look at Thursday.
I won't be here tomorrow anymore.
Okay. Well, hopefully I get it today, yeah.
There's a lot of line items in here. Any other, we've covered salaries, we've covered board prisoners, anything else that, uh, you got any questions about?
The nine-one-one system, where, how's that number derived?
Uh, first city, and you pay two-thirds, and, uh, we pay a third out of EMS. I think we got, yeah, I think I updated that number.
Yeah.
It should be accurate.
Yeah.
And they base it on their budget, and depending on how many calls.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think, I can't remember how many, has he hit twelve thousand this year?
I think it's out there.
Uh, it doesn't matter, I hit twenty, I think I'm, I'm gonna hit twenty-three thousand, so...
Yeah, because my recommendation's higher, because when, we didn't know the number from the city when you submitted, and so, yeah, we did, we did adjust that up.
Yeah.
Our food contract over there is, runs, does that run through next year?
Yes, uh, yeah, we just, we just...
I think we just bit it out.
Yeah.
So, it should be renewal one or two, maybe, for this year.
Yeah, two.
Yeah.
It'd be renewal two.
I'm done.
Anything else?
Nope, I was hard enough on him already, so, I warned him down, he's not giving in. I was just wanting him to find more money from the state, but...
And I'm still looking for my money from the state, so...
Well, it's not just your department, you got other stuff, too, health department.
Yeah.
Juvenile.
We need...
Court services.
I'm sorry.
I can keep going.
You done? We need to put here that security s- system in your budget somehow. What, I know you, we rejected the bids because they were too high.
Yeah.
Still plan to do something next year, though?
I, to tell you the truth, I don't know what I'm gonna do because, uh, one point nine is too much.
Yeah.
And only one bidder, um, so I don't know what I'm gonna have to do.
You wanna put a placeholder number in the budget, just?
I don't even know how to, because now I don't know if I'm just gonna, uh, contact actor controls to see what they can do to upgrade our current system and how much that's gonna cost. I have no idea what that number will be.
Okay. So, you don't wanna put anything in the budget and just, when time comes? If you're gonna move forward, you'll have money in contingency?
Close session, we need to talk about this on our security.
We can.
Like, I mean, I've got some questions, I don't necessarily wanna ask in open session.
Sure. Yeah, I'd be happy to. Do you wanna do that this next, or, can't do it tomorrow, but you wanna do it on Thursday?
Because I'm kinda curious where we're going.
I'm over...
This is all part of, this is like the third phase, right, that we were talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I don't know if y'all wanna do something in close session, talk about it, since it's security, or...
Well, he needs to get, he needs to look, figure out what he's gonna do first before we even...
I, I'm fine, uh, it'll probably happen next week.
Yeah, I think.
Okay.
You wanna do it next Tuesday, then?
Okay.
Whatever day was it.
I can get, I can get on the, I can ask Melody to put me on.
The only other thing, what Mark was getting to, page one oh one is the capital that he has coming out of his, his own fund. And then we also have capital that was placed in, um, the other sales tax, which is page one twenty-three.
That's right, I guess we could talk about that, too, because that involves a jail.
Yeah.
Or law enforcement building.
Sheriff's kinda special since he's an elected official, he usually just...
He is special.
Yeah, he usually just does his own capital when he wants, right? But the capital that comes from you guys, he should come back for permission from, just like any other department would.
Sure.
So, are you okay with what's on page one oh one as far as, or do you have any questions of the sheriff?
I would, just looking at this, um, as those, um, the stairways to the roof, um...
Yeah.
And all that, it sounds bad, but I would say that's the biggest priority because...
Safety.
Well, enjoyed it, and tried to go up that ladder with the, the circle cage on your back. So, you have to climb up that thing, which is sort of spooky. And then to get tools and stuff up, they have to throw rope up and drag everything up, so, safety-wise, and I think you're better off it. And that's the cheapest one, too, it's a little hand for it.
Do you need water softeners?
According to Greg, I do, but...
It's huge, that water softener.
Yeah, though, there's big, four big tanks down there. The only thing, again, I would go back to is, uh, only do one of those big projects like that at a time because I can't shut the jail down, and I can't be without water, so, so I would just, however they work it out in a manner that we're still able to operate.
I mean, we can go, we'll go back over our whole capital improvement budget, but Greg indicated replacing rooftop units is closer to two million. So, one point one, one point nine. And again, we, we finalize that, we keep that in, uh, capital improvement sales tax. Obviously, anything you spend on the law enforcement building legally, you can take out of six hundred budget, too, but, so, that's... You just decide, but, but you can also spend it out of capital improvement sales tax money, too, because that's kind of unrestricted. Well, it's restricted for capital improvements, but it's, the fifteen percent is not restricted to, you know, it doesn't say you can't spend that money on, on a law enforcement building, you can, but, you know...
It's just restricted to the, in my mind, the brochure that you put out, right? So, and that's not legally restricting, but...
Morally.
Politically.
Well, I haven't really looked at it since I'm fairly new.
But it's pretty...
When you pass a five-year, you, you, I know public works, you put specific projects in, but...
No.
On the courthouse side, you just, we just earmarked fifteen percent for any courthouse improvements. There's, it's not specific projects put in there.
Not specific projects.
Yeah, okay.
Specific, um, like, the parks, the, um, computerization, it has different stuff like that, but it could fit under the, uh, construction.
Facilities, yeah.
Yeah, facilities.
Facilities, yeah, okay, all right. Any thoughts or discussion on that, you wanna?
Not the sheriff here.
Okay. We're good.
Let's talk about it five minutes later.
Okay.
Right, okay.
We're done with, are we done with the sheriff?
Uh, pretty much. I mean, I, the last thing I was gonna throw out, I think I, last week, there's more funds there, we're, I'm breaking out some additional funds, but that doesn't have, that's very small.
I'm gonna be here for the rest of the day, so if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer any of them.
Yeah, otherwise, I think I'm... Oh, no, no, one more.
Too late, something will break.
No, I'm sorry. With the sheriff, while we're on the sheriff's budget, let's talk about the general fund transfer, too.
Because last year, we updated.
We can take a break first, but you're still gonna be here.
Oh, I got English. Yeah, I'm not going anywhere.
We can go back to, if anything, I need to...
I'm still on the...
What's that?
Said I'm still on the, I was on the last year.
Okay, wow.
Because it went up by the, what did we?
Cola.
It wasn't the cola, was it?
I think it was three percent.
It was cola, whatever your cola was.
Uh, it was four percent last year.
That, that what it was, cola, or was it that?
Last year was four percent, yeah, cola, plus a one percent.
I was thinking there was some other index we used or something, so...
No, I think it was straight four percent last year.
Okay.
So, do you wanna talk about that, the transfer?
Is it five hundred dollars plus, uh, two point two percent?
For this, if you approve, we, we make it three, uh, that was supposed to, yeah, that was supposed to equate about three percent, but, uh...
Well, here, here's the deal, I, I feel like we're losing ground, uh, over time, and I, at the risk of getting tomatoes, rotten tomatoes, and what's the other thing they throw at you as a politician?
James.
Babies.
Uh, whatever. I think there may be a day coming where we, we start to discuss, uh, with the citizens, can we reinstate the one-eighth of one percent sales tax for capital improvements for the law enforcement? Because we're, we're losing ground, uh, we're, we're eating up what was built up under the old one-eighth, whi- which has ceased. We, we don't get that revenue anymore.
Right.
Once the place was paid for, the law enforcement center, sheriff's office, whatever we wanna call it, once that was paid for, the, the tax went from one half cent to three eighths cent.
It went, yes, one half, a half a cent to, yes.
Three eighths.
I'm fine with that, if we use one-eighth of it to finish the interstitial area.
Right.
And then we can decide, do we put it back on the ballot to where it stays at half cent? Then they can use it for operations, but we need to do something with that unfinished area. And I, I mean, that would be an opportunity if that would service the loan for it, the bonds for it.
Yeah, hindsight, we kinda screwed up when we didn't ask at that time whether we could, but...
I mean, we, we, it was a promise made to the citizens, if you, uh, if you enact this one-eighth part of it, it goes away once the building is paid for. And true to our word, that's what happened. Actually, it happened sooner than expected because of refinancing when the rates were going down on the bonds and so on. So, was it fifteen years? I can't remember.
I'd have to go back. It was, it was fifteen, but we refinanced enough to change the payment during those times.
To pay it quicker than fifteen?
Yeah, we paid it off in twelve.
I think we, okay, so, um, but now, we're, 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 the county is having to move more dollars over to... Well, let's just say, at that time, wasn't there about a nine million dollar fund at the end of the twelve years that had accumulated?
Yes.
And that has, that has been whittled down, not, not, um, not with any crazy expenses or expenditures, but with, for instance, the data room, right? This is four hundred and plus, right?
Yes.
And then the, the changes that you've made there recently, well, that's part of the data room. Other things that you've done over there have whittled that down, and we're getting to... And we're getting to, we're gonna get to a critical point where there won't be any unless we, we turn around and start to collect it again.
Right, so there's, and I believe that there's two issues at hand. We have my operational funds, which the three eighths cents is not covering. And then you have the build-out of the facility, which is another issue, so.
And the ongoing maintenance with that facility, to then put a rooftop in our fifteen percent of our sales tax at, uh, one, two million dollars. We can't handle that in our fifteen if you wanna continue to do what we do for our, you know, for other facilities here. So, that may have to be relooked at. That maybe a half a cent is not the, the real answer, to go back to a half, that we'd have to get it more, you know?
I believe, if you look at the numbers, I think a half cent will, would make my budget, as far as the operating funds, would be fine. Bro wouldn't have to hit the contingency all the time. But the other aspect is the build-out. I think that's gonna have to be a separate, I think it's gonna be a separate discussion.
Build-out and maintenance going forward.
Well, we're not gonna settle that today by any chance, cause this is the first time it's really kinda come out that we've got this issue facing us over the next few years.
I would like to settle our general fund transfer, though, while we're talking about the sheriff's budget. Okay, I know these numbers are small, but we got the, what I recommended, we got the two million, forty thousand, however that number's come up, fifteen years ago, yeah.
It was in the literature.
Then we take out, we, we always do this, cause we hit up all the other funds with computer services, same, we had a sheriff, same as we do EMS, assessor, so. But we just reduce our tran, instead of charging him with that separately, we just reduce his transfer, so that's a hundred twenty-two thousand. Six oh three, we got the admin fee that we've always hit, all the sales tax funds, um, you know, that covers things like.
HR.
HR audit.
Legal.
Yeah, legal, so that, uh, uh, so that's a hundred ninety-two thousand reduction. We increased the base last year by four percent, eighty-one, eighty-one six. If you want another cola increase this year, sixty-one two. If we're, if we wanna continue the colas increase.
This, we're talking three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Based on the salary.
Now, is this scheduled in, in, in a, in here?
No.
Okay, so.
Last year's the first time we've ever done that. I'm pulling this up off BSA. There's always, there's always footnotes in, within BSA.
When, when you get to your bottom number there, what, what is?
One eighty-six, one ninety-seven.
So, where does that fit in?
That is on, that comes in about two places. That comes in the general fund budget. The amount going out is in page. Where would that be? Uh, I think I'm closer, uh, page eighty-three. That, that would be the budgeted transfer out of general fund. One million eight hundred sixty-eight thousand.
Which we do, too, all the funds that have their own sales tax or some other kinda revenue like that, so.
Right, yeah, yeah, we're treating them the same as.
And when this went on the ballot in eight, was it eight? They said that we would continue to put two point zero four million from the general revenue into the law enforcement fund. The sales tax has grown significantly, so I just don't think we need to pull it from the general revenue. Even if you take the one quarter. So, it was half, half-cent sales tax was bringing in around five million when we first started this. Am I right, Debbie? You remember that about around, good, good enough round number?
I was staying at that.
And now we're bringing in closer to eight million. So, and I'm taking three eighths percent of that five million, because eighth of it was used to service the loan. And that comes up three point seven five million, and if we take three eighths of eight million, that's six million. So, you got three point seven five million fourteen years ago? Twelve years ago, sixteen? And now you got six million, so. I just think we oughta be able to make ends meet without having to dip more into general revenue, so. I'm still a no on it, just long story.
Do you guys wanna go with another cola increase? To our transfer? How long have we been doing that?
Just last year was the first time.
First time you approved, yeah.
Set a precedent now.
You guys approved it last year, I think, yeah, you, well, you all, you both.
I was kicking and screaming. It's gotta be one of us.
I'm gonna vote yes and do it.
How much, how much is that?
Uh, sixty-one thousand.
It's, I mean, it's not a huge amount, it's just.
I would, um.
Over time, okay, alright. So, stick with that transfer number then, out of general fund.
I want to, uh, walk through that scenario that you, historical, at some point, uh, in open session.
Okay.
Went too fast for me, but I, I wanna get a better grasp for.
If, yeah, and if my math was correct.
Because I, I was thinking that the one percent sales tax, for instance, that, that Public Works, but I shouldn't say, capital improvement sales tax right now, one percent. I thought that was.
Half a cent?
Half a cent.
Half a cent.
Capital improvements? Oh, I'm sorry, at half percent. That does generate seven million a year, right?
Seven, eight, yeah. We just divided up.
Yeah.
Between eighty-five and fifty.
Yeah, I know, but the full, well, let's see, we could look to, who else?
EMS.
EMS.
Well, but then we rolled that one back.
That's a good split, too.
It's the gross number, it's the gross.
We gotta add a couple of numbers together. We're, um, capital improvement, we're at.
Seven, seven, without the.
Oh, right, yeah.
It's, it's eight.
Total, though, that's, that's eighty-five percent. We, well, my estimate is.
Right, but that, that eighty-five percent.
Eight point five million next year.
That's the whole absence sales tax.
Eight, eight, eight point five million is the estimate projected next year. And that, that a half a cent sales tax.
And so I used three eighths of that to get, I used a quarter percent less, because that's what three eighths would be, is a quarter cent, quarter percent less than the half-cent sales tax.
Right, you'd get seventy-five percent of what, uh, the absence.
Yeah.
Generally, yeah, okay, so.
Yeah, it still hasn't kinda filtered all the way through to have a good account of that, because we just started that.
I mean, it's a good thing that it's going up, and everything else is going up, so I'm glad it's.
Let me.
Going up, maybe not keeping track.
Kinda bring this question up. Due, due to, uh, the internet shopping, and our use tax.
Use tax is going up.
Going.
At a higher rate than sales tax, yes.
Have we?
I'm not sure exactly where that's at.
Considered that use tax increase as really, as a replacement for some of what would've been sales tax? You follow me there?
Um, well, we. It's absorbed in GR.
I know it does, but, but the fact is, uh.
Probably helps pay for this.
Sometimes, uh, the county resident is paying a use tax.
Sure.
As opposed to a sales tax.
If they're buying in the county, yes.
Okay. But.
For sales tax.
Is somehow those who rely on sales tax getting sharded a little bit, because instead of it coming in as sales tax, now it comes in as use tax, which goes to GR?
You could look at that argument, I guess, yeah. As that grows, yeah, I mean, sales tax is still growing. We've never been able to get a handle on local use tax as far as how that, it doesn't really, you would think it would be the same percentage increase as sales tax does, but it's, never has, so.
It's going.
It is.
At a much higher rate, growing at a higher.
Oh, yes, but it varies from one month to another so greatly.
Well, I think maybe that's because Amazon is not.
Or how the state turns it back over to us, maybe different.
I don't know how it gets from Amazon to the state and how the state to the county.
Right.
And there's always some inconsistencies as to how fast it's happening.
Yeah, some vendors are quarterly, some are monthly, you know, we just don't really. But you would think after this many years, we'd have some kinda basis of that following. We can't.
Once in a while, there's, the, the revenueers, a D, a DOR, go out and find a violator.
Sure.
And you go back and get about three years' worth, and so that messes up the, the stream. It goes, it goes popped up and.
Yeah.
Drops down.
One could argue what you're saying, though.
I think you got a valid point there, but the general fund's getting a little bit of a bigger bump, cause the use tax is gonna, at a higher rate.
Right, okay.
So, you guys are okay with this adding a cola again this year?
Two of us are.
Okay. I will admit, or, or, or not admit, but I'll reiterate, the request was to get some marijuana tax money and to transferred, but. That's zero, yeah, I bumped that, took that out, okay.
Well, he wants us to share that, too.
Well, you actually initially, you did agree to.
I just.
I forgot, you agreed to it in a meeting.
If we, if we get some, some distributors out in the county, then we can.
Retailers.
Well, then we'll have to have another deputy to control that area, so you might forget.
Alright, alright, I think we're.
That's a good point.
I think we're done, sheriff.
I think we're taking a break.
Right.
The system will stay on, so.
Okay. We almost had a war now.
Which direction are you going now? To the front, go down.
Hey, can you talk? Can, can you, I can't, my phone and my computer both are messing up, but, um, could you have, is Tim in today? I need to get an average daily booking by month for this year. Yeah, for this year. Sure. Yep. Thanks, buddy, bye. Let me show you this. So, whenever we're keeping up with those, we're moving fifteen, by the way, but we have, that we have to keep up with, two in bags, four in apartment models, one in EPC.
He doesn't pay for pigs, right?
No, I don't pay for them, but I got it to keep up.
Yeah, right, okay.
Seven that's on furlough, thirteen on the top, which is getting up to twenty-three. I heard, uh, we're sending fifteen, so.
Do they have a newer jail, aren't they?
Let's go here. He's got a brand new office. I went and looked at it, I had a meeting. No working.
Going to your office?
Yeah.
Can I call you?
Yeah.
Wheeler's in here.
No, I'm black.
That wasn't too bad, was it? Nobody got bloody.
No.
We got the EMS and the law enforcement out of the way, so.
That's your biggest one, isn't it?
Don't think so, yeah. It is totally horrible. I was waiting for that to come in. I was like, well, I figured I said.
Yesterday, I, we were hard-putty even find hot water in the ladies restroom. Did you notice that? It stayed ice cold most of the day, like ice, ice cold, like the hot water heater was off.
We had hot water in, in the, um, kitchen.
Mm-hmm. I'm wondering if that's not on a separate unit.
I have no idea. I have no, it, it, it takes, it takes a long time to heat up anyway.
There was discussion about opioids. We're, we expect that.
Call it at least ten years, right?
Yeah, it just depends on the settlement.
Yeah.
I mean, some of them are three years.
Yeah.
Some of them are seven, some of, one of them is fifteen. But a lot of those haven't even settled yet.
Yeah, that's what somebody, Jeff or somebody, yeah, Sam, somebody mentioned that.
Sam is the one who reads the stuff in the Wall Street Journal. So, I mean, I can't tell you how much you're gonna get.
Right, exactly, right.
But it should be coming in.
Yeah, we've gotten over three hundred thousand so far, so.
Yeah.
You think a hundred, over two-plus years, you think a hundred thousand a year is a?
I don't know, Mark, it's just what we get in.
Okay. I know, it's hard to predict for twenty twenty-five, but I gotta put a number in, so.
You can ask Debbie what we've been getting, but I.
Well, we, we know that, we've got those figures.
But those, uh, some of those, the distributor payments are over three-year periods, those aren't gonna be coming in again. It just all depends on. Well, I, you, it depends on the settlement agreement, and it's not the same for everybody.
You got it, you're right now.
I got, these are the two outdoor warning things. I don't know, there really wasn't a place for seeing the sign, but you signed anyhow. And let me go get the other stuff.
You just can't leave. You have more shit in your head than anyone will ever know, no, you can't, over time. Over time, it just. Makes me nervous every time I think about it.
Now, you know, the mic is running.
I have decided. Just generically.
Okay.
Because she has so much shit to work.
Okay, so, I need to move this one, because this is the year-to-date reimbursed to general revenue, right? For the, under that ten million thing.
Yeah, we need to move it in our.
I got this.
That would necessarily be a, but that would be, what'd you call it, what'd you call that?
Inter, uh, just a account adjustment.
Account adjustment, yeah.
But when I did that, I was gonna get this out of there, cause I know I'm closing. I know I'm moving this one, which is the sheriff's deal.
Oh, we're moving it.
And I'm moving that three hundred fifty.
Okay.
And then this is the balance I need, right? But there's still money left in this one, which is the Pringer Building. There's still money on it, so. I'm wondering, did you budget the, all of it, even the interest that we've earned? Cause this is like two hundred. Where did you budget it in contingency, or where did you?
Uh, there's just like a, we, we're not calling, we're not sort of, we did put contingencies, but it's similar, it's like a, it'd be just to, it would just be to that number, but without a project, it would be to. There's a budget for three sixty, three thirty-three, five, five eight two two zero 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 zero, without a project number. That would be the interest, yeah.
So, I'm wondering why I have still money left in this one.
Just have to look at your figures, maybe, do you have?
Well, I, that's why I just wanna get it cleaned up, because compared to my spreadsheet, that should be the amount, but then I don't take into consideration any of the interest or anything. So, let's talk.
The interest has gone into any of the specific projects.
So, did we have this one higher for a reason? I don't know, we'll have to go look.
You send me your notes and I'll look at them and I'll go to what.
I don't know if you are concerned about this, and this and this, I mean, that it is, have a fifteen hundred.
Oh, there's no cost to that, yeah. This is just like a show, what the sheriff calls it. There's no additional cost to it.
Okay.
Try to explain that at the meeting, you know, show something like that.
Do you need water or anything? Are you good? Okay, okay. We've got coffee in there if you want some.
This one has a price.
That's it. These are together.
I think that's it.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we're still recording.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna return it, because I gotta do something.
Well, we'll see what happens. It'll be, it'll be here tomorrow, talk about salaries.
I should've, I should've called her. She's sleeping a lot.
She getting up and moving with her?
So, yeah, that they. MU, they don't do any therapy, since she goes back on the twenty, so I gotta take her over, and I won't be here on the twenty.
I am out on next week, just to tell you.
It's been. Almost not looking this way for.
Yeah. There you are, sir.
More?
You got a good one. Time's out on the tongue.
I don't know how to change.
How can you have me logged in? It's Jessica.
I forgot my laptop. I forgot to bring my laptop, yeah. I don't have to be her. I don't know, do you still have that folder?
I got it.
Yeah, you had that.
I'll throw it in there, yeah.
Didn't you let me try classes with Jess?
No, no.
Okay.
Your bus back.
By the time you get down at MU and then drive back, I could do it first day. Wigan.
We'll see, we'll see how it goes, but I'd say we've got, we got through two of the biggest parkings already.
Yeah.
Yep. And it's not even noon, first day. I think we'll, I think we're on track to finish tomorrow.
Yeah.
But we'll see how the rest. Sure. You ready to start?
Yes, let's.
Okay. I thought now we'd just go back to the beginning. Just go forward. Well. As the auditor, on the fir, on the first, first budget in the, in the book, so. Somehow the auditor got the lowest department.
There we go. Okay, what's the next?
I didn't set up B as an A, but for some reason, the auditor is the lowest department number, so I guess that's why I get, that's why the auditor's budget goes in first, so.
A, it's first as an A. Many, many moons.
Oh, okay, you want it alphabetic, too. Gotcha. All right, page twenty-two.
Oh, many, many moons.
As, as we're going, as we're going through general fund budget, I will just, budgets, I will just reiterate. Costs going up, revenues kind of leveling off since COVID. We don't have, we don't have a lot of spare, I'd say, extra money in general fund this year. My budget, the new, the new money coming in versus just operating expenses currently in the budget. I think we're within, it's closest been in my three budgets, but it's like a hundred to two hundred thou, somewhere in the hundred thousand to two hundred thousand range, just in the general fund. That are, and that's without, and that's without not budgeting the department's request for more than, departments that are, are requesting more than COLA, so. Just throw it out there. There's lots of mu, there's, there, we got a very healthy reserve. Of course, we'll talk about the Pringer, new Pringer Center and how much we want to put in the budget for that, but, but just, just throw that out there.
I, well, I, I wanna visit or revisit with you about what we have or don't have.
Yeah, I looked at those figures. I, I'd have to look at.
Okay, well, I might have a schedule for me.
But also, keep in mind, this fund is the only fund that all the other funds will come to if they can't make their budgets.
Yeah. I think your figures, those figures, I think you threw at me, were looking at everything.
They are.
Yeah, so. But just focused on the general fund, where the budget's getting tighter and tighter on that as far as new money coming in versus just our operating costs. I mean, costs are going up, gosh. Insurance is just crazy, going crazy, yeah. So I think we just, just wanted to throw that out there as we're going through the budgets. And what you, what you plan to approve, so, okay. Auditor's budget, page twenty-two, I'm only asking for COLA. I would like to ask for the, the part-time money, drop that down to just three thousand next year. Just to, so we can finish off some projects we started this year that Lisa, our former chief deputy, could help with. But she is basically moving anyway, so she won't be available as much either. But I, I didn't want to continue that part-time. That was, you know, last year, that was more to help with the transition and then do, do some additional projects. But I, I, but, but I would like to ask for, that we keep three thousand in next year for, for her.
I, I thought last week, after several other elected officials asked, asked for more for specific employees, you made some kind of comment, well, if they're doing it, I'm doing it, or something.
I, I would like to be, I would like, if, if you're gonna look at Larry Collector, he's asking for more. If, if you're gonna look at your employees, if you're gonna look at Judy, you know, similar. Obviously, we don't do the same things, but, you know, there, there's a lot of offices, I'd call them more clerical, bookkeeping, record-keeping type offices. I'm one of them. Larry's one of them, Recorder's one of them, Treasure, you know, those. Again, we do, what we do is very different, but it's, it's more the, kind of the white-collar clerical type, type jobs, so I would, I would like to be, I would li, I don't want to be excluded from any consideration of, of, you know, whether those type of employees should be paid more or deserve raises. I, I would, I would ask that, you know, we ask a lot of Sheila, but if, if you look at those types of salaries, perhaps include all those offices in some kind of study, if that's, if that's possible.
Or at least, we need to figure out if it's really market-driven or if it's performance, you know, because when, once you put that money in these particular department's budgets, then obviously that becomes the norm, and then they can use that to share amongst, that's not really what we should do. We should have a grid, kind of like the EMS does and the sheriff does a grid, you know. So before you deviate any different than what's in the budget at the two-point-two and the five-hundred, then I would suggest that I'll go back through HR, sorry, Sheila, but, and then have some kind of basis for that. Via market.
Everybody would like to give their employees more, but it's, it's what, it's what we can afford, so.
And to be consistent. As best we can.
Given that, if the other elected officials are successful in getting what they're asking for, what would your number be? What would your ask go up by?
I, I really can't answer that, because I haven't given any thought.
Is the, is the answer?
I, I think our, I think we're, our pay is currently in line with what other, what we're paying the other departments, I think, are. Well, our chief deputy has historically been higher than other chief deputies, but, you know, our chief deputy has to have, what is it, education, experience, and
I think training is a fair word.
Training in, in accounting and auditing, yeah. None of the other offices have any, anything in statutes that, that requires them to be a, you know, eighteen and a resident, well, no, that's just the elected officials' residence, but anyway, yeah, it's well, historically, but my office's chief deputy has been paid more than the Collector's chief deputy, the county clerk's chief deputy. But I think we're, we're, we're pretty well in, I, I, our, our salaries are in line with pretty much all the other similar type offices at this point.
Today.
Today.
But not January one, if they all receive more than what you, as a budget officer, said they should receive.
Right, right. Then I would expect you, then I would li, then I would request you consider our offices to give similar, similar type raises. Which, I don't know, I don't know what that number would be. I really have no idea what that number is or should be.
Well, I'm gonna ask a probably unfair question. Can, can we put another line in our tentative budget and, and a placeholder amount? Just as we process through, and each of the elected officials, as they come in, and Larry comes in and says, I want X, X, and X, we throw it into that line. Recorders ask for, and we throw it into that line, and at the end of this round, we've got different offices asking for this amount. And we have to decide whether or not we can absorb.
If you open that door, then I think you'll have to go back and open it for all the other departments.
I, I, I'm not excluding anybody.
Okay.
I mean, but he, he's the first one that said, hey, if you're doing this for the other elected officials, you gotta do it.
So do you want it to be a percentage of the total salaries to set aside? Because if you, I mean, everybody's gonna say, yeah, get me in that boat, you know, if, if you want.
Well, we could do it, but, but if we went, let's, let's find, let's find the sweet spot. Let's, let's look at the Collector's numbers. He's asked for a fixed amount of money, hasn't he?
I think so.
Three thousand?
I think his, I think he had COLA plus.
What does that three thousand dollars represent as a percentage increase for all of his staff?
But what you're saying was.
It's a thousand a person, basically.
No, he was asking three thousand per.
I don't know, in this column and address this at the end.
Either column or row.
Row, and like, Mark's asking today, we just put it in an ask, we kind of put it over here in a side pot, and we address it at the end, kind of like we did in merit pool last year.
Exactly. I wasn't gonna, probably, I don't like the term merit.
That's, but kind of like that, so, is that?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Last year, it was just a one percent pool that we gave everybody, and they said, and we, we, was in their budget number, but we said, okay, you tell us how you're giving that out to each of your employees.
Through each.
Here before, we put money in what we call the salary reserve that did not go to each office specifically, but it was set aside and then ran through the process of approving once the year got started. After the budget was approved, and you went back and approved specific increases for specific departments and.
Took it out of that salary.
And took it out of that salary reserve. I'm putting you on the spot. Oh, gosh. Shoot, I don't think I brought those figures up, but I had it written down somewhere that how much each percent would cost the county. What if one percent COLA would cost the county? I, gosh. You know what about our total payroll?
The Collector's office.
In GR alone, it would probably be over eighty-some thousand, but, with benefits, but I'm guessing off the top of my head.
If you look at that, that schedule I gave you there. Uh, no, you, oh, I think it's over on your left hand or somewhere. Okay. There's a schedule there that shows the difference between what the department asked for and what the budget officer suggested. And then, now, you didn't ask for anything extra, but, but the Collector did, and he's asking for almost a one percent. Point nine-one, almost one percent more than that you, but the biggest one looks like the clerk, or maybe maintenance, but let's just go with the clerk, four-point-five-one is what the clerk has asked for, more than what you said.
Yeah, can't remember what he asked for.
And some people ask for, you know, a flat five percent, or, you know, so it's kind of hard.
I think that's what he did, something like that, maybe double the COLA.
Yeah.
So Judy's ask was a flat four as opposed to two-two.
Well, yeah, but she's asked for one-point-four-two percent more than what the budget officer said.
Yeah, her spreadsheet that she gave us last week, she had projected a flat four prior to getting the two-point-two number.
That's right. She asked for, she projected four, she was asked for a four percent COLA, so. Plus, I think, a little bit extra for employees, too.
I did a schedule of what the department asked for and what the budget officer said, and then the difference, and the difference is as a percent. So for, for Recorder, the difference is one-point-four-two percent. She's asking for one-point-four-two percent more than the budget officer came up with.
But again, that, that takes away from whatever you guys is COLA. You're saying a COLA of two-point-two, right? And you're saying five-hundred. Right, so that is what you're saying. Yes, they could've asked for four, they could've asked for five, you know, but your decision was to stick with, or the budget officer.
My recommendation is to stick with just the COLA, or just, just the COLA.
Right. So to do anything different, I would think you would go across the board again, but.
See, Gail, it's like what I told you, and you called me Friday. We make, they make their Christmas list, and they're asked for it, and then we have to whittle it down to what we actually.
So, yeah, I, I think at the very end, when we're, the end of our budget discussion, settle on, sat, well, first, on the COLA.
Right.
You, you could, if you guys don't agree with my COLA, or you just want to do flat three percent, or ten percent, or no COLA, or one percent, you know, that's, I want you guys to.
But keep in mind, it's budgeted right now.
Majority, what you want your COLA to be, and then, then when we get to that point, then we can talk about perhaps an additional pool, like we did last year, a salary reserve, something like that, so.
And that, again, would come out of contingency, because he does have this balance as of now, right? But we do have some fixes to do in here. With the insurance and stuff, so all of that's gonna come out of contingency, up or down, probably.
So. So anything on my budget you don't, don't like? Larry may want to, I don't know if Larry's listening, anybody want to shout out to him if he wants to be up here?
I think his only concern was the salary.
Yeah, right.
I can speak up for Larry. He said that he wants his money to go to the sheriff's department.
Raise your right hand.
Here in a minute, someone's gonna hit me in the back of the head, gotta be Larry.
He offered an MOU. I would not suggest you guys go that direction, because we got out of that business a long time ago with making basically funds.
Salary adjustments.
Yeah.
Just for a full position or something.
Yeah, we've done MOUs, but to.
And I think our stance has just been, that's not fair to the departments that don't have a another fund, slush fund, but if you called it that, I'll call it that.
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to get around that.
Okay, I do have what Larry asked for. Got a schedule. Three percent COLA plus a two percent adjustment, so, of course, the elected official can't get the two percent adjustment. Elected official can only get the COLA, but, so, for his three full-time employees, he's asking for an additional two percent on top of the COLA. So that's roughly the twenty-eight-hundred.
And I think he's asking for more than that now.
Yes, that, this is the August.
Oh, he is. Oh, oh, he's asking more than that now.
What's his hard dollar ask now?
Three. On top of the.
I believe it was three thousand.
It was a thousand for three different people.
Yeah, on top of the COLA.
I understand, yeah. So he's, he's asking for additional three thousand dollars. I, I'd call this, this. I, I'd call this, this row or this column, I'd call it the ACR column, which is combination of additional pool, pool, that's the A. C, contingency, and R, reserve, we'd call, and you could even call it the ACRM, merit, uh, but it's some...
A, B, C, D, E, F.
Yeah, it's ACRM number, Larry's ACRM number is three thousand dollars.
Per.
Per employee.
Part, not per employee.
Yes.
Three thousand.
Is that what he's asking for now?
I was thinking it was three per, but I'm not sure now that...
I, yeah, I don't remember right offhand.
Well, look at...
Look at his email and then...
His, his number is not that much bigger than...
Well, that's what his number is facing.
Well, this was what he requested on September first.
Okay, but, but...
But he's apparently changed his request.
As of, as of last week, when we sat here, he requested two-two-six-five-six-five, and you said two-two.
No, that's what he requi, what's in the budget is what everybody sent me by their deadline on September first.
All right, what, what was his number, what I just said?
That two percent.
Yeah, that was what, that's his, that was his September first, uh, request, right here.
What did you say? Two-two-three-nine-six-eight?
Yeah, I just went back to just the cola only, yeah, so.
That's only...
So, two-two's that before the cola?
No, here's his initial, his initial request back in September first, three percent cola, two percent additional adjustment for his three full-time employees. So, that's what he asked for on September first.
What I have put down is he had six thousand plus cola when he received.
Yeah, that's what I had too. That's what I put down.
So that would only be two hu, two thousand percent.
Two thou, so two thousand, so now he's asking for two thousand a person plus cola.
Yeah.
Well, what, what doesn't compute for me there is the difference between what you show, department requested, and budget officer number.
Right.
The difference is, is only three thousand dollars.
Right, he changed his request.
He went to six thousand instead of...
This was his original request.
He went from twenty...
Twenty-seven ninety-three, then there would've been, that's salary only, the benefits would've probably kicked that up to your...
Another three thousand.
Three thousand difference.
Right.
So, yeah.
But now, at his budget hearing, I didn't write it all down.
Six thousand.
Yeah, I had six thousand.
Okay.
It's six, it, it would really be six.
Six plus.
And if we said six, it's six plus seven.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, November twenty-second email was two thousand in addition to the cola.
Okay, two thousand each. So, it's a dangerous slope, right, you, so...
That's why I wanna get my arms around what each, each official or each department is asking for. Because ultimately, either three of us will say it's zero or X, but probably not the full amount.
Or it's, as the budget officer submitted, with a two point two and a flat amount, and then here's the salary adjustment pool again, and we'll go back to HR.
ACRM.
ACRM.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Mark does not wanna enter a new account.
I, I've got it here written down.
That's all we need, is one more account.
Yeah, I'd have to enter a new account for each department, so.
But, but if we were looking for the number for the collector, it's six thousand to put in that line, is that right, generally?
Yeah, six plus benefits.
Yeah, that's what I got.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Mark, you want to go back and get you two free?
Well, yeah.
It's coming.
Uh, another thing on Larry's, but down on materials and supplies, I'd, I'd mistakenly, I thought he had a county cell phone, he's got a county iPad. So, his communications and his cellphone budget will be combined, but he won't have a cellphone budget, it'll be zero, so. He is, he, um, also on postage, uh, his postage ran actually higher, his current mailing was higher. So, he's asked if he could increase that from twenty-eight thousand to thirty thousand on postage, that'd be like the...
What are we doing, printing and binding then?
Uh, I think he was pretty good with that, I think that came in okay.
Okay.
He was just asking for two thousand additional postage.
Yeah, postage's supposed to go up again, I think this year, so...
I had checked Mark by both of them.
Uh, yeah, I did, but I checked with him, and he's, uh, I, I got an update from him, but we're, uh, the proposal would be to up it to just postage to thirty thousand, so. And then, of course, with our salary, uh, the only other potential change on his budget, otherwise... Okay. Everything else okay on his questions, any of his line items?
All right.
Of course, he has the tax maintenance fund, but that's, uh, you know, but we do budget that to make, since it's a special revenue fund, but he, of course, he controls how that's spent, so. But like Debbie said, he's, he said at his budget hearing, if you don't agree, if you don't agree to additional raises, he would like to get an MOU where he would pay for that extra money out of his tax maintenance fund, but again, that's something Debbie does not recommend, we do, but...
Otherwise, I'm gonna stumble with Larry.
Anyway, okay. Okay, treasure, um, again, he didn't ask for anything, but cola, uh...
His capital request for the copier.
Yeah, copier maintenance, that's his minimal, that, that's gonna be very minimal.
So we can, but they will just address that in our capital, right?
Uh, no, that would be, that would be maintenance, we probably should add a line item, but it'd be...
It's like...
Ten dollars and tw- fifteen dollars a month?
Yeah, I'd say at least.
Just for copies, yeah, just about all we, not, we would use the copier over there too when we move. Neither of our offices makes very many copies, I think that'd be, that'd be very minimal.
You're gonna share the count.
Yeah, yeah, I could put in two hundred dollars, two fifty.
Yeah, that's what I had, five-three-two-two-five is the account number, and that will serve as both of you guys.
So then, the copier would actually come out of our camera?
Yes.
It's already bonded, it's, it's paid for this year, we, we're bonded.
Service contract is all we were talking about then, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so he doesn't, currently, at this moment in time, he doesn't have an ACRM?
No, he's like me.
Okay.
We, I didn't ask for anything other than cola.
Give it a minute.
I was gonna say, wait for that email to pop up, there it is.
County clerk is next.
County clerk, yeah. You're right, we had a pretty, I, I need to, I need to see if I can find out what Steve was asking for.
I've got a note to myself here, Steve added ten percent.
You are correct, yes. I think that's right.
So his number is about thirty-five thousand, well, no, that's not true, it's, uh...
His, all, his request for, yes, right around ten percent, yeah, in fact, I think that's what he was asking for, ten percent.
Thirty-five, uh... It's certainly, what is it, something, oh, ten percent, yeah, versus, yeah, I think his, his ACR number is pretty strong here.
Yeah, yeah, he did ask for ten percent cola.
And you would've generally...
I bumped it down to three. It, it, the five hundred plus two point two is, is right around three percent, yeah, so.
But included in the salary number is his number.
Right.
Which he doesn't, you can only change that by a...
Yeah, whatever.
By a cola, you can't change that.
No, no.
You get the five hundred too.
Because he's asking for, he asked for a ten percent cola, he's got that on his salary.
Oh, it's a ten percent cola.
Yeah, yeah.
So, again, this would be...
He does put, he does have an amount added to his salary too.
He does.
For that, but, uh, the elected officials...
That's pretty presumptuous.
That's like five thousand, that's like an extra fifty, two hundred dollars, but, anyway, so, that can't happen. I mean, unless you do approve ten percent cola across the board, which I know you're not, but, yeah.
I'm having a heart pump, I just go, sorry.
Yeah, I think that would, that would, that would, ten percent would hit us a little too.
Sandy, even making big eyes.
Yeah, anyway. So, yeah, you could, you could basically take out about five thousand of his ask, 'cause that's not... Yeah, you can't get that unless you would approve that in big cola, so.
Okay.
Uh, I think everything else, I mean, of course, it'd be a non-election year, or a...
Big election.
Slow election year, so his election costs are, will be way down, but, uh... I don't think he's asking for anything extra on any of the other line items, so.
There's a big jump on the equipment, what was that, the service contracts for the new IP?
Oh, yeah, what was that, you're right.
I have it, I thought you had it in the breakdown.
I think it, I think it's because the, all those new voting pads he bought the first year where there was no, uh, the first year it was covered. So I think that's kicking in next year, let me, let me check on that, see if I can get to that. Yes, thanks for catching that, but I'm almost positive it's that, uh, yeah, the pole pads, uh... About eighty-four hundred dollars, I think, as well, we'll have to start paying on that next year.
And we probably paid the first one when we bought it, or something along...
Yeah, so that's the biggest increase, let's see if I can figure out... Says data activation plan for sixty pole pads, that's another nine hundred, so, yeah, ninety... Yeah, about ninety-three hundred dollars, uh, for those. Looks like his voting equipment license fee is maybe going up some to another thousand dollars for Mattkins.
For that polling, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Is that polling?
So, anyway, yeah, thanks for catching that, Sheila, but sometimes those projected number... I still didn't figure out exactly how BSNA projects certain things, so I would put stock in all those projected numbers on, on the screen there, but, uh, but, yeah. Okay?
His election services fund, that's...
Yeah, that's just, I mean...
His slush.
He gets to, yeah.
Neighborhood improvement.
We put a budget in, but he, he, uh, controls statutory how, how that's spent, so. Thirty-one is just the neighborhood, the NID, neighborhood improvement districts, that's just the tax or special assessment money coming in from the collector and, uh, payments on the bond principal and interest, that's, that's all that goes through there, so. We're down to two, we got, uh, Parfum Meadows and Randall Drive. Ketterman Lane shows up with twenty-three activity, but that one's, that one's pulled out. Questions on, on that, okay. County commission, did you ask for three and three, six percent?
Yeah.
So, the initial request on county commission salaries was, uh, six percent.
I was optimistic.
That's why... That's the, that's about the only difference, correct? Yeah.
I'm looking at some changes, maybe mid-year, or depending on what, how you guys want to, um, change out things, getting prepared for next year.
So there's about fourteen thousand of difference?
Uh, yeah.
Six, seventy-five to sixty-one.
That's about right, yeah.
Thirteen and change.
Thirteen, okay.
Um, here, pull up the, the schedule I got, um...
I may have had that figured in.
Too far. Well, five percent cola, okay, so you requested five percent cola, not six.
But the five percent request goes to...
Three, basically, or less.
So...
Did you put a, a cola in there for the three elected officials?
Yeah, that five percent would be on, tacked on to yours, if you go that high, so.
I don't see a cola being that high.
So, that's the thirty-two thousand ask, yeah, is that the difference?
Thirty-two.
Yeah.
Compared to current, but, yeah.
And if I drop it down to three, it's nineteen, so, yeah, that's about the twelve, yeah, that's, that's the difference, yeah. Uh, oh, you know what, I saw a cell phone, time to bring that up, if you guys have any opinions on cell phone stipends, I think, uh, go away, just add them, include them as part of their current salary.
Why?
'Cause currently it is, currently it is, people, it's taxable.
I understand.
Yeah.
But, so, we're gonna take away the cell phone stipend, give them the money, is that what you're saying?
Well, I mean, that is the money, the cell phone stipend is to use their personal phone.
I thought someone said last week that everybody's got a cell phone.
They do, I mean...
They said that, yeah, but...
But are you making them, is that part of their job to, to give us their cell phone numbers?
If they don't have a phone, I'll buy them one, I mean, who comes here without a phone, for real?
It's not really the phone.
And you don't have to get a different package to use it for work. If you want a separate phone, that's a different thing to getting a stipend, because we do have separate phones that we have to get.
And that's new.
iPads or whatever, those are separate, different things.
Yeah, that's new.
The stipend.
My recommendation is do a web stipend, but then the question is, those who are currently getting a stipend, do you wanna make that part of their salary, or, I'm taking away?
If they say they need a different phone for doing county business, then we can address that.
We need a different phone for county business.
I agree.
Every, every one of my deputies.
There's a lot of stipends.
Yeah.
And if you turn that around and make them all, give them all phones, it's gonna cost more.
They wanna carry two phones then?
I, I do, but, I mean, I don't want them to carry two phones, but they use their personal phone for a lot of work.
How much extra does that cost them to use their personal phone?
Cost to you?
Cost anybody, cost them.
It's, it's the convenience of being able to get ahold of them on their personal phone.
So, should we give, well, I got a home line, can I get a stipend for that too, so you can call me at home? I got, I got internet too, so you can email me, so you can give me a stipend for that, I mean, where we're gonna draw, you just draw the line yet?
We already drew the line, because we're giving stipends based on, based on job titles, not based on everybody, but based on job titles, we've already went that way. If you wanna go back to the way where we pay for everybody's cell phone bill and give them a county issued phone, that's two different things.
Everybody's got a phone, they already use it for it, we're just giving them a stipend, we're not requiring them to go get the phone, they already had it when they came in. Right?
Well, I have a question on that, if you don't mind, because my understanding when I touched a line, you know, my...
Well, I have a question on that, if you don't mind, because my understanding when I touched upon it, you know, my personal cellphone is not. Used, should be used for business, you don't want your business conversations mixed with personal, in the event something would happen, they're gonna confiscate my cellphone, they're gonna have all of my personal.
I don't care, take it, I'll go buy me another one and I'll just take the apple, uh, uh, because I'm not doing anything illegal on it, FBI wants to come in and.
You may not care. I wouldn't want my personal and business conversations.
It's already out there.
So are you carrying two phones, Jeff?
I do.
You carry two phones? I do.
I've got the one for the emails that comes directly to the phone, because we couldn't get that set up any longer. It's out there, I don't carry it with me all day long, but I can have access to it, just because I can go to the emails easier there. But anytime if I'm, if somebody texts me for work, it goes to my personal line.
Well, there, there is the problem with, you know, that we can't use our personal cellphones to get directly to our emails anymore. Or our calendar without going through that other step to go to the internet and get on the county stuff, so hence then we started buying cellphones for particular people here. Based on that, and based on the, you know, using your personal cellphone.
So we can get rid of that too, as far as I'm concerned, I think that's ridiculous, because if they're gonna hack into that phone, they're gonna hack into my phone.
That's your old call about the risk management of how.
Brian's right now, I have an account, if he's listening.
He's coming.
Poor guy.
That, that's.
The cellphone stipend we're paying, are we paying, uh, benefits on, on that amount as well?
Yes, it's part of their salary.
It's really part of the salary.
So it's part of their salary.
Yeah, their retirement is based on it.
So we do away with, make it part of their salary and be.
It varies depending on fifteen dollars a check to twenty-five dollars.
That way we don't have to.
It would, it would make the most sense just to do away with them, make it part of their salary, nothing's changed.
Yeah.
Uh, I wasn't, I didn't hear what you said, because someone was talking.
Unfortunately, it does vary, I mean, anywhere from fifteen dollars a check to thirty dollars a check.
No, speaking of things, it's not that much anyway, but it's just for the sake of argument.
I mean, I think it just, you, you need to, are we gonna get into the cellphone business again, because then you have all the IRS rules about, you know. When you pay those bills, you should have a detailed list to make sure all of those are business related calls, and, and that's why we got out of buying cellphones for people, we went to the stipends, right? And I understand the IT world and how that is a problem now, and then maybe we want to get rid of personal phones and go to just. Uh, phones that the county supplies, but those should be very limited, they should not be for every one of the ones that we're paying stipends for now. And like the sheriff would argue, we don't want that, I mean, I would think, for your guys to carry two phones out in the field, but.
If you make it part of their salary, then it increases my overtime. Right now, it's, the stipend does not count towards overtime.
It does not count towards our overtime.
So fifteen dollars over a month is how much per hour?
It's not fifteen a month for us.
How much is it, thirty, okay, thirty dollars?
I think thirty for a day.
A dollar a day, so how much is that per hour?
Well, I mean, if it's not that much money, and GR wants to, I'm happy with it, Jeff, I'd be good with it.
I think yours is, most years are fifteen, three sixty a year.
He's saying a month.
A month, I'm saying a month, I'm, you're in my pay period.
Oh, a month, pay period, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The prospect.
And plus, if they move positions or they get promoted, uh, then their stipend goes up. So then, if what you're saying is, is, uh, every time they get promoted, you're gonna give them, I'm gonna have to give them a pay raise, I mean, I think the stipends is where it needs to stay.
Yeah, I do too.
Not eliminate all of it, I mean, I'd just say you're required to have a cellphone if you're gonna have a job, because like.
So you're.
Be certified, or we're required to have a degree, or whatever.
I thought it'd make it easier.
I mean.
Because it's taxable anyway.
Yeah.
It's taxable to everybody, why not make it part of their salary, no, you don't.
I think it complicates the issue of then, uh, more people wanting a county paid cellphone, and then carrying two phones again, and then IRS coming in and policing those lines.
Why, why do some get seven twenty and others get three, twice as much as others?
Yeah, that's always been a contention.
Because the IRS don't come and take your phone?
I don't either, I don't agree with that, but that's how it's come over the years.
Because who's gonna take your phone? Somebody's gonna come and confiscate your phone.
If they're discoverable.
If I get sunshine, supposedly, they can take my personal phone.
If they don't know. Anybody that's ever had a phone call or text from me, I've probably called your personal line, even if you have a private one, they, they could come and take it and say, I need to check it.
That's true.
And see if you've had anything from a county, whoever.
That is true, but not all cell numbers are published, and I think that's part of the tie to the stipend.
Mine's published, because I put it out there and it's only in that.
Okay, exactly, but I'm just saying, that, that, when I was hired, that was part of the explanation, because if my phone rings at midnight, because we have an injury, I'm expected to answer the phone. And that, that was part of that explanation, so my cell number is published, I would not otherwise have had four hundred people in the county have it, but it's accessible to them.
There's numbers that aren't necessarily published, that I have.
Pull it up on the AM, yeah.
I mean, there's deputies or whatever, I mean, I was on the phone with someone this weekend, so.
That's the nice thing about cellphones, once they call you, you got it, right, doesn't mean, doesn't mean they want you to have it, Sheriff, so.
I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask the question, do we ever pay a cellphone stipend to someone who doesn't have a cellphone?
I would hope not, but I don't know, I don't police them.
Do you, do you make them prove they have a cellphone?
The department heads of, the department heads sign off on that, so that's where I take it from.
We do.
Do I call their numbers to check? Absolutely not.
If someone's, if, if you, if we hire somebody and say, oh, by the way, you get, uh, fifteen dollars in pay period for a cellphone, they go.
It's a valid point.
And they don't have one.
Short of, give me your phone number, and I'll give you your fifteen dollars a month, and that's what they do, like at Public Works, they gotta know they have your phone number, right?
That's what we give them.
Yeah.
We're talking this to death.
Yeah.
They are, and I, the other thing is.
I thought I was saving you work, getting rid of cellphone stipend.
I think.
Somebody who doesn't have a cellphone, but gets a call on their landline.
Right.
Is that landline subject to being subpoenaed?
So why is it more work to add it to their salary?
Add it to their salary is not, but then, are they gonna wanna, are they gonna wanna give us their number?
It's all Mark's fault.
And then, like he said, now the salaries are different and mixed up, because they change positions, and maybe, it was based on a position, right, how much they would get, if they would get.
Okay, you know, a while back, you didn't have a cellphone, you were required to have one, or we, a lot of them were carrying two of them around, so then we got rid of that, and I'm just carrying one phone around, because carrying two of them around is a pain in the butt. I'm sitting here just hoping I don't lose my county one, I don't know what happens then, you know?
And when you want to upgrade it, that's on us, you know, and some people were getting eight, nine hundred, sixteen hundred dollar phones, and some people were getting five hundred dollar phones, so there is another problem, so.
Well, that's been cured by a plan. Stipend?
Right, but not the county owned ones having.
Well, right.
Somebody get, there's some that get seven twenty a month, there's some that get, or a year, some that get six hundred a year, others that get three sixty a year.
Yes, absolutely, there's different rates.
It's a big difference, I mean, again, it's not, it totaled, what's that?
If you want sixteen pro, that's probably.
No, it's based on how.
Now, that I don't agree.
It was based on how many times they get called.
Different people, different cellphone stipends, if you're gonna, if you, if it's gonna be a cellphone stipend, it has to be the same for everyone.
I agree, I agree, and I would.
So which one do you want to go with, reduce people or increase everybody?
That's why that'd be easier to put it in their salary, so, but I guess not.
Well, that's what I.
I would've bet this wasn't gonna be the biggest argument today.
I know, I thought that would be easy, but, I guess not.
You didn't pay with the county, because we pay retirement benefits on your cellphone side.
Yeah, you did.
You put it in the salary.
It's considered so.
Well, it's, it's, it's in there anyways, it's in, it's in.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
I guess the only difference is, you'd get paid overtime on it, if you got, if you put it in their salary.
And then you switch positions.
That's the only difference, right?
Changing positions.
Yeah.
Because changing positions, that'd be a nightmare.
Whatever the vote is on this, I'm giving my proxy to.
What do you mean for me?
I'm just gonna leave it the hell alone.
I can withdraw it, although I think, personally, I think it should be the same for everybody.
Well, I, I.
You should settle on an amount, same for everybody.
I disagree.
Okay.
I disagree, it should be the same for everybody, because there's different responsibilities.
Yep. Depends, the higher the title and the more calls you got, was the highest pay.
Then it should be part of your salary.
Right, because.
You just argued it should be part of your salary.
Might be a little more if I get more calls. I've got unlimited calls.
To require me of having.
I've got unlimited data.
Calls, a twenty-four hour, or twenty-four seven operation versus a Monday through Friday to five.
I won't believe it the same right now, but I will argue this all day long.
I'm with you, I'll argue, let's get some pizza.
Yeah, we're gonna get angry.
But it doesn't mean you have to buy a more expensive cellphone, based on your position, right?
We're doing this at five o'clock?
I, I, I won't vote with Jeff.
I'll, I'll get the Ubers lined up for us.
I, I won't vote with Jeff, so, Jeff's gonna leave it the way it is, I say leave it the way it is, we got Harry's proxy. Leave it the way it is.
That is something we should look into in the future, how's that?
Yes, yes.
All right. Sorry, I.
No, don't be sorry, I, I agree with you, Mark, I just don't think there's more to it, I think it's gonna look mean.
I agree with him.
More resistance.
I get it. Okay.
Page one thirteen. No, I'm just kidding, that's just, just trying to.
Can we put two percent in the proxy?
If we did that over the phones, my goodness.
What's that?
Can we put my two percent in the salary?
Sure, no, everybody gets a raise except for Libby, I'm just seeing if she's listening.
Then I want it too.
I know, but that's what I'm saying.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, at the end, we gotta maybe come to a consensus to what they want, how they want.
But I did ask for that extra two.
The salary, yeah, but you're asking for less than what Steve asked for, more than what Judy asked for, so, you know.
Right.
What, what amount did you have in the ACRM then?
Uh, two percent, I mean.
What is it, CRAM?
Two percent then.
I got three point, three plus three is what I put it down.
No, it's, I, I was wrong, it was three plus two. All right, we'll keep going, the thirty-four, that's just the domestic, buy domestic shelter fee, that's just in and out money.
Yes.
We only get, uh, requests from, I guess, the only sheltering, pampering, rest, so.
Yep, I make an application.
Uh, page thirty-five, ARPA, I guess at some point, are you gonna present a final ARPA schedule for the approval?
I've got it on the agenda for the twenty-third.
You got that in separate agenda, okay, all right.
Yeah, but I do, yeah, I do.
But basically, we will have just a handful of projects still open. To carry forward to the last two years, where all the money has to be spent in the last two years.
Absolutely.
That will have everything obligated by the end of this year, so. Okay. Do you want me to go through any of that detail at this point? Okay. Uh, thirty-six, these are some of the new funds, this is the nine-one-one prepaid wireless fee. Which I want to put in a separate fund, so it'll be easier to track, it's a revenue that can only be spent for, it's not a general revenue, that you currently spend in the general fund. It, it can only be spent on, uh, nine-one-one related, uh, expenses, uh. I think the, have we spent any of that money yet, Sheriff, or were you?
I wasn't listening, I'm sorry.
The nine-one-one wireless fee?
Yes, remember, that's the money we used for the study, and there's another, uh, facility study coming up, that they're gonna want to use some of those funds for, for that, for the consolidation of the nine-one-one centers.
Okay.
So that's another, another cost that will be coming up soon, we'll have a number for you all pretty soon for that.
Okay. Thirty-seven, opioid, again, that money can only be spent on specific. Types of expenses, so I want to put that in a separate fund as well, make it easier to track. And we will potentially add the sheriff's position in there, I guess. I guess we almost got a two, two to one vote on that, so I will add that. Because you got, we've got EMS, we've got Pringer Center, then we'll add a third line, Sheriff, to that.
And I could do an MOU if that's what you want to do, but since it's our own fund, as long as you got it in the budget, I guess it'd be okay without an MOU, okay?
Okay, now we're at the reporter dean, so, and Judy's here, so.
I stepped in because I think we've about to talk about the IT budget.
Come up here, Judy.
Oh, it's not, not worth all of that, I just think we forgot to mention the IT budget when I was up here during the presentation, and I just wanted to make sure you had that.
The IT budget as far as maintenance, or?
I know I said. For the, uh, yes, and it's twenty-two thousand dollars for our software, it was, uh, a contract that we had, and it should be the same as last year.
Oh, that's in Brian's budget, yeah, it's.
Oh, okay, so we didn't mention that, so I didn't know if I needed to mention that.
Yeah, no, that, that's in the, that's in his budget, in his equipment services contract, and line item, he's got like thirty, forty different, uh. Different items, I'm sure.
What's the name of that?
Is it I County, or?
I County.
I'm, I'm sure that's in, I, I know he's got a number in there.
I know I submitted it to Brian, but I wanted to make sure, since we didn't talk about it, that it was understood.
Yeah, uh, I know we got a number in there, but, yeah.
That's all.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Equipment service contract, twenty-two, uh, twenty, no, it's not, twenty-two notes.
I can't really see it, so I don't know what it is, oh, yeah, it's at twenty-five, computer information concept, people, people wear software?
Oh. I County.
No, it's I County.
I, I, well, he calls it people wear software maintenance, I County.
People wear is our previous software company.
Okay, I guess, he put in parentheses, I County, so, I think it's, so twenty-five thousand.
Oh, okay, I see, I'm sorry. Yeah, you said, how much, Judy, did you say?
It's twenty-two, twenty-five, maybe that is the total of everything I had on the sheet, I didn't bring it up with me, because we always put in two office chairs, and we added. A couple other things in there, if, if we shouldn't do them.
What's that?
She added some cap.
I think twenty-five is the co-opt of total, not, not what we pay I County. I can run and get my sheet, I didn't bring it up.
Well, that, that's what Brian, that's Brian's estimate.
I think you have it too, I submitted it to you, you know, look at the IT.
Okay. This is the number Brian put in there.
Well, that's okay, I'm not gonna argue with it.
That's the number he put in there, okay.
They'll invoice us, so.
Okay, all right. Uh, and your ask, what, what was your salary ask, four percent, instead of three percent?
Four percent, plus the pool.
Okay.
Was my ask.
Anything else on? Recorder's budget? Okay.
Judy, do you want to, uh, you sent an email out after last week's meeting. You could get a little more publicity on it, and you talked about it here, talking about. People not spending their money with some online.
People are wanting to know if it's worth them spending money.
If you want people to hear what you're saying, you need to be closer.
And that might be something that is trivial, would be interesting to do in an article.
We've asked, I, I think they have done it about a year ago, but we have asked people, we encourage them to go ahead and sign up for property fraud, we are just getting a lot of phone calls, people are. Concerned, and actually, right now, is just reading a bill, there's some legislation, there's all kinds of comments of, of what people think we should be doing. Um, in the recorder's office about property fraud, I mean, we do not research the property before we record it, that would be up to title companies to do. We follow our statutory requirements, we do a thorough check, we make sure that there is a notary, that notary does all the verification with IDs. Uh, but people are real concerned about quitclaim deeds, I mean, if we were to research property, we wouldn't be able to record in the timeframe we're supposed to, we have to have everything recorded within three days. We actually record same day, if we have things left over for the next morning, it goes on first thing, but when you're looking at ownership and property, they don't understand, you could own a quarter. Jeff could own half, I mean, where's the other interest, it is difficult, that's why they get title insurance, but for us to put a plug in, we are asking people. That it's free, it's a free service, you'll receive a notification if something is recorded with your name on it, I think it's a good service, and it's free, so we are encouraging people to sign up. For property fraud, um, if they need more explanation or better understanding, they're welcome to come in and we can talk to them about it. So, hopefully, they, they will do that, instead of trying to talk to their legislators and changing what recorder requirements need to be, that's very difficult, and it gets out of the scope of what we do.
Property fraud, is that through a software that you have, or is that?
It is.
It's through a soft, so you would request at your office for that?
Yes.
So I'm like.
They can go on our website.
Oh, okay.
And click on Deed Watch, and just register. It's real simple.
Deed Watch.
Cole County.
Do most counties off?
Collector's Office.
There are, I think it's about eighty-three percent of the counties, everybody who has I County software, I know has it. Or if they have Fiddler, I mean, Fiddler has it, theirs is really great too. So eighty-seven percent of the counties. Maybe the smaller counties with lesser income, they probably wouldn't have it.
So where's that at on your page? So if I go to colecounty.org, and go to Recorder, and then you said Deed Watch?
Yes, go under Property Fraud. There should be on the left-hand side column.
Property Solicitations?
Yes, well, no, Property Fraud, or.
Property Recording Alert System?
Yes.
Okay, so Property Recording Alert System. Maybe this might be something we get posted out there that's available. I know you mentioned it last week, and I forgot to go ahead and look at it, so I think it's a.
And I had sent an email just to mention to commissioners, because we don't go out and talk to the public, but you do, so it might be easier for you to encourage people.
What?
They don't listen to me, Judy.
This one, Property Recording Alert System?
Property Recording Alerts.
There it is, right there, okay. And then you go to?
Go to the deedwatch.com. I need to adjust that. You can sign up different ways, but the deedwatch.com is real simple.
They have that in all the counties in?
All the count, they have eighty-seven percent of the counties have it, but if they have I County software or Fiddler, they're gonna have it.
So that's the spring, you just start, you sign up for it?
Yep. You have to select your county in your email, and it's done, real simple.
Is this like with those title lock company, I mean, is this?
That's what they're selling, they're asking, right, yeah.
You can get a similar protection, or what, or at least.
Right. You'll get a notification on the document type that was recorded, the book and page and the date, so.
Very good.
Yeah, so I appreciate that, yeah, thank you for asking. Did you have any other questions? I might take off next year, so I want extra money for my chief. Wait, wait.
I heard, okay, all right.
You're good. I mean, I try to be real conservative. I did look at, I mean, this past year, it was hard to keep up with all of the additions of people. All of the different adjustments, but I, I try to look at a bigger picture and compare us to what our, our education requirements are. They're not all the same as other departments, so it's kinda difficult, but I did try to go conservative in my, in my ask. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
Yep, thanks.
Okay. Uh, next one, forty-two, that's usually an easy one, G I S, only one employee. She did not ask for anything above the.
Equipment Service.
Cola.
And again, there's about thirteen department has that work for you guys, so.
I guess this is.
And they wouldn't feel right asking for some, wouldn't, so, just putting it out there.
We did, oh, yeah, we, she had, she presented memo, there were, there were a few tweaks to her budget. I think that Equipment Services Contract, you need to go up just by a couple hundred dollars, and the Office Supplies, maybe a hundred dollars, so, yeah, nothing. I'll make those changes unless you have any opposition to those couple increases, okay. General account, this is a pretty big one, I don't know if we wanna skip.
It should probably come at the end.
Yeah, what point do you want?
This does balance out, Judy.
Yeah, this is how we ba, this is where everything balances. We could maybe skip over that for now, come back to it.
Yeah.
There's some pretty, pretty big, uh, but we could go to forty-six, that's the marijuana tax. Again, that's just gonna be sitting there, I'm gonna put it in a separate fund. We spent a little bit out of that last year, this past year, but, but we'll, we'll just put what's left in, over there, and it'll just.
Can you break it into two layers?
It does have its interest earned in there, so, you mean a pot to spend it?
Oh, yeah.
A pot to spend.
You know what, we could, we don't have to credit any interest to, if we don't want to.
Well, I don't mind, I don't mind crediting it there, but in case there is a clawback, I don't, I don't think there will be. They can't clawback on it.
Right. Well, interest will always be a separate revenue line, we can easily.
Spend that much.
Yeah, we, we know, we'll, we'll know how much that is.
But, uh, in that first meeting about first-class counties, uh. Pete from Cape.
Cape, yeah.
I thought he said. What, he, he said, he even suggested separate accounts.
For the interest.
For the interest in one, and the taxing the other.
It'll always be in a separate revenue line item, so we can easily.
Okay.
Go back and add it up.
Exactly how much interest we earn on it, yeah, so, that's. We got no, our November sales tax payments that came last week in early December, we got no, we got no marijuana tax money from Department of Revenue, so.
Zero?
Zero, yeah, so they're already holding it.
Yeah, but they can't withhold it on the west side of the state.
We didn't get anything. Maybe I must follow up with Department of Revenue, but Treasury got no, we got no marijuana tax money this month, so.
That's true.
Interesting, cause that was an eastern district.
Well, I got conflicting information at MAC too, about, someone said, no, it's, it only affects eastern district counties, but then someone else said, no, it affects, it'll affect. That decision affects all, the whole, well.
But there's case still being played.
Okay, okay, but it would affect, Department of Revenue's gonna stop collecting it for everybody, or distributing it to everybody.
There, 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 I bet you retail.
I heard it both sides, so I don't know, but apparently they're stopped.
Yeah, I wonder if retail.
They didn't send us any money, so.
Yeah, they still collecting it here?
I got my CDL, I can't even, I'll take. I can't even have any guns, for my knees, not for my knees, my knees.
We got, we didn't send.
I accidentally had to pull in that.
Bad, bad, all jokes.
They have a drive-through, Debbie, it's discreet.
But, anyway, the transfer out was supposed to be for the sheriff's position, part-time position, but I'll take that out, there'll be no, I'll, I'll change that, so. Uh, forty-seven, health insurance fund, anything we need to, I think Gary suggested we decrease the interest revenue on that, page forty-seven. You thought that was a little high, and that's fine.
Yeah, I was trickling down, although they.
Right, you were, you were figuring about a two million dollar average balance, and I think I, I agree, we should, we will drop that down. But ain't noth, no other discussion on health insurance fund, or?
We, we built in all the changes we made.
I think so, yeah.
I heard that we know of. I don't know when.
Oh, you know, that's something else I might do on every depart, that's right.
Soon as we get.
When we finish, when we do final salaries, everybody's health insurance costs department-wide will go up a little bit, yeah. Cause each employee's gonna be kicking in, what?
Ten, plus we are ten.
Or, no, yeah, that, plus we're kicking in higher.
And plus higher on the dependents, yes.
So, it's not, it won't affect this fund, but it'll affect everybody's.
Yep, once we get salary fixed.
Every department budget a little bit, yeah, so. Brian was here, he's probably not here anymore.
I don't see if he had any. Did he come in last week, I guess?
Yeah, he did talk. I'm not sure, he probably doesn't have any more to add, but on page forty-nine, his budget, uh. We gotta add that cybersecurity grant, he got a hundred and forty thousand, and, uh. Oh, maybe look at all their internet costs again.
Yeah, he's, he's looking at, what is it, what is it, a hundred and fifty percent increase for twenty-twenty-five. And he's got two hundred and fifty thousand in capital programs.
Right. Uh, building maintenance, Greg might wanna sit in, did Greg wanna sit in on that?
I think he kinda did the other day, so.
That's true. I guess he, I, I don't think he has anything new to add, other than.
I don't think so either, and probably some of it is still blockwork.
Yeah.
Other than he is asking for, okay, well, I guess, I guess at this point, you know, we're together with Sheriff and, and EMS. At least decided on the number of employees. You wanna talk about adding an employee to his, uh.
Are, were we waiting for the visit coming?
He's asking for additional employees.
But he's out, they, they, he never has a full staff working. He was too short today, I think he was too short yesterday. I know Friday Stan was off, cause they didn't empty the trasher, they didn't do us, so, so, um, you know, with, with what they're making.
He did ask for a new full-time position, but we do have that bid out for the EMS building. It's not in yet. You guys were gonna look at kinda that, and whether this position, or, um, I would think we would need both. You know, if you did an F T, then we wouldn't have to pay for outside people to come in for EMS, but we were gonna wait to see what that bid looked like, I think you guys were.
I'm not adding another person to it. I'll look at doing the outside for EMS, and I'm not so sure, we just shouldn't look at that for, across some of our other buildings. Cause it seems to be working really good at, um, Public Works, EMS, um, they don't have sick days or people out over there, they, somehow, they still get stuff done. And I think the, the pricing on it is very reasonable, and if we're gonna have somebody here, I think we need to have maintenance guys. We got a lot of painting and stuff that we could do, and different things going on, so we had, what, we have a bid from EMS to power spray a garage door, and, I mean, I, we could've done that, so.
I told, I told Greg, I don't think you need to add another to-do item on your list, which would be to take care of three nineteen items. I know we're looking at, you know, we've got something circulating for R F P, right?
That's the EMS building, three nineteen items?
Yeah, I'm sorry, three nine, yeah, why add another item that has to be done daily, when you've got, your hair's on fire.
Well, we need to see what it's gonna come in at, is this what we need?
So at this point, no, you're not, you're not gonna add another employee until you get more.
It's, he, he has such high, well, do we have a retirement coming up in there next year?
Um, I've heard it could be as much as two years out, yeah.
February of twenty-six, is that right, what he was looking at?
All I know is Greg said two years, so I don't know exactly what month, but, but that could change, anybody could change. So we'll put it on question mark as far as what, when are those due? Do you have it off the top of your head?
I don't know.
That's okay.
Of course, his ask is.
Let me look.
High, because he's asking for, according to your schedule, he got into like twelve percent higher, that includes additional position, and some significant pay bumps to get his salaries up to. Had three percent. That's for eighteen, that was asked.
Eighteen, nineteen.
Eighteen to nineteen dollars now.
Yeah, they're right now probably, are some of our lowest.
Some are like thirty-four, what is that?
I think sixteen eighty is the low.
Sixteen eighty is the low, so.
So you can add that to the A C M.
The bid opening for that is January eighth.
Oh, the day after budget.
The day after, for the cleaning services.
And you could always put that into that category too, if you wanted to, that reserve salary, whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah, you could put the extra position into this.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll re-sign at the end here, put money in the reserve account. Anything else on his? Uh, let's get planning, cause I think Eric wants to be here tomorrow to talk about any of the budgets, Eric's planning there. Public Administrator, page fifty-six, uh.
Take out his bond, cause he paid.
Yeah, right, his bond paid. Oh, I was gonna ask you in commission budget, has the Associate Commissioner's bond been paid for already too this year?
Got the bills, I'm pretty sure.
Cause normally, I know we try and get all those bonds paid for before the first of the year.
Yeah, we paid them in November.
Okay. And Ralph, that's for just a little bit of merit, oh.
Three hundred and fifty merit.
A little bit of merit for his employees, yeah. Eight hundred and fifty dollars a piece. Per employee, so total of twenty-five hundred dollars, is that, is that the difference you came up with?
Should've been nine three.
No, only nine, you only came up with nine or ten. He was asking for eight fifty per employee.
Twenty for them.
Yeah. It's not necessarily computing to your, your spreadsheet, Harry, but, anyway, but. Okay, should we skip Health Department? I'm sure Christie wants to be here. She's always one of those ones to be here when we talk about her budget, so. Judicial, I don't really think we need, that's all been pretty well, that was all pretty well decided back in August. The only thing I made a note of is in Court Security, to increase the, the professional services to, on page sixty-eight, to a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Cause the contract with the private security company went up, so. It was at, we had a hundred and twenty-one, so Judge Beadham asset increased at the one thirty-five. I think that is the only change we're gonna make to any of the court budgets. Uh, Page's Child Support, we'll skip that till Locke's supposed to, he's, he's, he's planning on coming in tomorrow, except tomorrow works better for him. Public Safety, Juvenile, there's really nothing. I'm on page seventy-three, that's all been, our salaries and everything was pretty much decided on, so nothing, no changes there. Page's County Medical Examiner, again, we, the autopsies this year kind of fallen in, like, oh, you got a bunch of new ones?
I just got a letter about the cost is.
Oh, the cost's going up.
Actually, it's the same.
Yeah, okay, okay, it's the same. Yeah, okay, okay, it's the same. And he's not, apparently not gonna charge us anymore per autopsy next year, so, and again, that.
Could change, but yeah.
Yeah. The, we're budgeting sixty-two thousand. I think we're, we're, we're definitely below that for now, but, so we'll stick with sixty-two thousand. Uh, prosecuting attorney, again, we'll skip that for Locke tomorrow. Page eighty-three sheriff, we talked about that, the general fund transfer. Then we're all ready to page eighty-six, emergency management.
So, it was here this morning, do you wanna see if he'd wanna come in this afternoon?
He didn't really have much when he came.
Even like, yeah, last week, he didn't, he said everything. He's good on here, we'll, we'll just, again, the salaries, we're gonna, we have to tweak for everybody, but. I, I think as best we can, we'll adjust his salary budget to show.
He did only mention Tracy an increase, but he didn't say how much.
That could go in this, or this reserve pool, whatever. But I think because we'll pay, we'll be paying bill in a part-time category, we'll try and. You know, we'll, we'll take, I don't know, how long, we expect that to go on, a couple of months at least into the year? At, at least, by the time we look for. A permanent number, it's gonna be. Two, three months in. You could ask the HR expert.
What? How long will it take us to? Go find someone. Last year, it took us right at five weeks, well, year before, when we hired Nick, it took us right at five weeks. By the time we posted scheduled interviews, it made a decision, and then he came in forty-five days later. So, it was about a three-month process altogether.
Once we get budget done, get back to a little normalcy, then maybe we.
Yeah, okay, so about three months in, maybe estimate it that way?
Approximately, yeah.
We're in good hands with, with Phil Far, so it's not like.
And again, when you change something like that, we can always do a budget adjustment, but I just, I just wanted to get an idea, is I wanna. All the salary line items are gonna be tweaked or changed, so I'll, I'll change that accordingly. Yeah, he didn't, he didn't have any other questions about anything else in his budget last week, so I assume he's, he's good. Then eighty-seven, we, we, last year, I started separating out his uh, LEPC funds he gets from the state. It's, it's more restrictive on what you can spend that on. But it's uh, it's just a very small budget, about six thousand a year they give in. Uh, parks and recs, we'll skip that for Eric, of course, public works, we'll skip all that till tomorrow. Assessor, oh, I forgot to ask if, we wanted to ask if. Think our assessor-elect wants to personally sit in on any of this?
Oh, you know, it's a good idea.
I mean, you know, our current assessor is in for eight, two-thirds of next year, and uh, the assessor-elect comes in.
At the time, we're working on the next budget.
So, really, yeah. He doesn't have a lot to say on the, on, you know, on the budget, but uh, for majority of the year. Majority of the year is still under the current assessor, so. But, I, you know, I actually increased the current assessor's salary budget, cause I think he. I think just the cola, no, he only asked for like three percent, and I think my five hundred plus two-point-two percent upped his request a little bit, so. So, I don't know that we really need to, do, do, do you see any need to discuss the assessor's budget anymore than we did last week with Chris?
He had mentioned.
No, it's to employees, if they find him.
Right, right. Anything? Good on assessor?
Yep.
Okay, alright. We're just gonna fly through this, law enforcement, we've already done.
So, we wanna have, let Christie come in this afternoon, or?
Who?
Christie, or, or, we're scheduled till three o'clock, I mean, you can take a break, yes.
Yeah.
You know, we can take a break for a while.
We could see if she wanted.
And see if Christie wants to come in tomorrow.
Or she'd come tomorrow, we could break today at lunch and she's in tomorrow. It seems to me we're on schedule to get done tomorrow. Cause we, okay, we got Eric Lanware coming in, we got Locke coming in. Potentially Christie, who else did I skip over, is that it?
That's about it.
Yeah. I, I wouldn't. Oh, we wanna talk about one, we'll have to talk about one twenty-seven.
We have to finish up GR.
Finish up GR.
But that's about where we are right now, is GR and sales tax, and then those departments you just said, so.
Yeah, and then very end, capital improvement sale, again, we wait, that, that's mostly.
No, they'll be around for, it's a.
We can do GR and then tomorrow, just do, finish it, do GR and then finish for the day.
Do, do one twenty-seven, finish for the day, and then come back tomorrow with the rest of those. I think that's perfect.
Yeah, I got, I got a personal request that we start at eight-thirty tomorrow versus eight. Does that give anybody a lot of heartburn? There is a couple of agenda items, but.
Yeah, we posted that, that. I don't know if it makes a difference or not.
It's a simple way to differ now.
We're buzzed on through, do you wanna start at nine, and, or does that help you, or eight-thirty good?
That helps too, oh, well, nine is the better.
She just changed it this morning, which I didn't, yeah, we did.
We won't have that much to go through tomorrow.
Is that okay, and move back, I mean, we can do that?
And then we have, we have a closed session.
It could say, we could, we could set you here for the first hour. Alright, I could just sit for an hour and take any questions.
Yeah, Wednesday, I mean, I'm available, you know, all day, if we gotta go later in the afternoon, but, I mean, we just. We said we're gonna do one twenty-seven right now?
We need to call it off.
Might be tomorrow too.
Let's do that.
So, nine o'clock is actually budget time tomorrow, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
We can be here earlier, but I'm gonna be a little bit. Do you wanna do other gen, what are those other agenda items?
I have one, which is just the budget transfer, and then Eric.
Renewal property capital and liability insurance.
Yeah, hopefully I'll have that. And land warehouse, some stuff that he added.
Second final reading of budgets, so.
And landware added some stuff this morning.
I already printed it off, too bad.
Well, we made a, an agenda, revised.
Start adding stuff like that.
No, I'm sorry, you want me?
It's already on there. It's a good thing I came into work early, that's why.
So, I'm, I'm with him.
Okay, I'll have to reprint tomorrow.
Eight, eight-thirty works.
Okay.
Eight-thirty?
Yeah, we'll be down with very good stuff.
So.
What page is one twenty-seven?
Okay, sorry. I'll get Melody to put, so we're gonna start at eight-thirty tomorrow, right? I'm just gonna have to put something out.
Forty-four, forty-four. I'd just leave it, Debbie.
Yeah, but I don't want any public here.
People turn it slow at eight o'clock. We have, we have a test free.
Do you think they look at it, cause they haven't been here at eight o'clock on time? Where was, where was Eno at this morning at eight o'clock? Yeah, Kayla, you don't have to be here till eight-thirty. Okay, we'll save our comments for after you get here. One twenty-seven.
Page forty-four.
Page forty-four.
First page is the, pretty much all the revenues. Yeah, tax revenues that go into general fund. Local use tax, the sixty percent of the EMS sales tax, property tax, stock insurance tax, those are the big ones. Uh, took out, of course, the marijuana sales tax line will have zero, the nine-one-one prepaid wireless will have zero, we're putting, putting that, we're putting that in a separate fund. Oh, Debbie, I did have, I wanted to ask you, we got the health insurance revenue, but isn't that, that's the money coming in from the retirees? And then, and then up over here, shouldn't that number be the same?
Yeah.
Okay, somehow I got off there, yeah.
It's usually budgeted.
Yeah, cause department request was thirty-five, I don't know why I put fifty-two, three oh five.
Yeah, it should be probably about thirty-five.
I made a mistake, John, do you believe that?
I don't believe that.
How do you look at what the employees pay, is that in here?
Uh, no, this is only the retiree, this, only the retiree.
But our health.
Goes through, through this, through this account, right, that's why I'm gonna go through this, one twenty-seven.
And COBRA.
So, over on the departments where the employee of the department is now paying.
Right. Ten dollars or, yeah.
Twenty bucks a month?
If they have the PPO, yes.
That's being picked up over on that budget?
Yes, everybody's budget.
Yeah, 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 sorry, this is just the retiree, should just be in and out.
And COBRA people.
Oh, okay, but I'll change that to thirty-five thousand.
We should be able to move that also in anniversary, so.
Well, it shows up, cause there was forty-three dollars of activity in twenty-twenty-three, it'll fall off completely.
Oh, okay.
The statute says, in your budget, you're supposed to put two years of actual activity, which means twenty-three, twenty-four, and then your twenty-five budget.
Whatever the CPA says, we have.
It's gotta stay, that forty-three dollars has to stay in there this year.
We can't lose that history.
That's right.
Okay, the, uh, the transfers in, I think. I'll just make sure I double-check all those numbers, that has to agree in and out, I think one year I missed, made a mistake, and I had to adjust it, but I'll double-check those. The cash forward, that's a big number, twenty-seven, five, that's gonna reflect. The four million we're going to now, immediately expense out of ARPA. That was initially earmarked, well, initially, go back to the very beginning, Pringer, you had about six million, roughly six million in ARPA for Pringer. We reduce that by over a million for the HVAC, cause again, that was a shovel-ready project that we knew we could pay out ARPA. So, the final decision's been made to take the rest of the Pringer money out of ARPA, cause again, we're not, we're not there yet to.
It's in the next.
Allocate or, or whatever.
Just meeting the deadlines of the, using it for sale.
The proper word, not allocate, commit or whatever.
Yeah, ob, yeah, encumber.
Yeah, all, all the ARPA money needs to be obligated by the end of this year, so.
So, there's a, it's in the next AP to move that money.
Yeah, so that four, close, four-point-seven million will be moved to the general fund. Because we can, basically, the first ten million of ARPA, we can spend on pretty much anything we want.
Salary recovery, yeah.
In reality, I think you could still say you committed six million dollars of ARPA to Pringer.
Yeah.
But just so we don't lose that funding, we're, we're, we're moving it around, so.
This, this twenty-seven-five cash forward. Now, the treasurer every month gives us a recap of what he's got invested.
Invested, yeah.
There, there's about thirty million, I, thirty million showing up on Eric, but that includes.
Other funds, yeah, I think, I think the last one, he had about nineteen million in general fund invested, yeah.
If that's the case, we got twenty-seven-five and nineteen of Eric's got invested, does that mean we have eight million dollars of cash lane ran?
No, this, ARPA was invested too, that's why I was waiting till.
Yeah, right now, we got about five million of ARPA invested.
Okay, so, that nineteen plus five, point four?
That's twenty-four, there's a couple million in health insurance and a couple million still in law enforcement we got invested, yeah, so. But, okay, so nineteen million invested in general fund.
Bring over that, um, ARPA one.
Yes, we, we've always got cash in the bank.
I know, but I was just trying to back into how much, how much cash do we have being in the bank, just.
For our banking agreement, we're supposed to keep around forty million in the bank.
To get the T-bill rates.
To get the, yeah.
That's why it was bid.
Including forty million?
On all of them.
We try and keep about forty million in the bank, and we invest everything else above that in treasuries, yeah.
And that's according to the bank bid that we did.
Yeah, that's what the bank bid says, yeah. Central Bank doesn't hold us, they don't penalize us for going below forty million, but we try and stay, we try and stay at forty.
Which say we're a little bit low, forty million, but if you're, if you're carrying foreign funds.
Well, between all of our.
Well, that's all those funds.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, alright.
Yeah, I'm sorry, forty million, that includes the forty million in the bank, plus the thirty, maybe thirty million we're at, invested, that's everything.
It dropped to twenty-nine.
That's our capital group, so, that's, that's everything, EMS sales tax, road and bridge has a little bit of balance, and ARPA, yeah.
Cause they can't spend it as fast as it comes in.
Their budget.
They spend it big when they spend it.
Oh, no, no, that's cap, I'm talking just the road and bridge fund, their operating fund.
Oh, okay.
Public, their.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. They got a couple million there, I'm, I'm just saying, it's all, it all, it's every, every fund, every cash, all cash we have in every fund in county is, is in, is in that. Okay, anything else on the revenue page?
We might be too conservative on the interest, I don't know.
Again, I'm trying to, yeah.
I know, it's gonna go down, but I don't think it's gonna go down that much.
Okay.
It's easier to be conservative on that side.
Yeah. Then page forty-five is the expenses, we, the expenses we appropriated on one twenty-seven, um, workers' comp, but is that going up, is that?
I think it, I'd have to go back and check, but I think that was where we ended up when the bids came in, cause we pay part of it this year.
That has already been bid out, that's, that's good to go, okay.
I just have to now charge each of the departments, but that's what this.
Audit, economic development is your lobbyist.
Lobbyist and Jeff City.
Do we still have our five thousand somewhere in here for salute point five?
It's in that professional, sir, oh, no, it's in economics.
It's in economic development, yeah. It, it's there. Do you wanna look at any more, any detail in here, or? I can go detail, you want me to? If we wanna verify any of that, I could pull, pull up the detail.
Now, we might be adding to economic development, we've been asked by Columbia Regional.
Yeah, economic development is salute to America, five thousand. Chamber attraction campaign, five thousand, and our JC rep, a hundred and fifty thousand. Oh, is that on the agenda, is that gonna go up?
We're still under the.
I've not heard of her.
We're under the original.
Okay.
I think we're.
Yeah, we added.
He came mid-year.
We added some last year.
Okay.
I think we went from one twenty to one fifty last year.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we.
So, that's good. I've not gotten a request to increase it, I don't know if we really need to, I think we're.
We didn't increase.
I think it's a good number that we have in there, so.
You wanna talk about the airport?
No.
Um, December twenty-fourth, that our commissioner, Stacey Bond, from Columbia Regional Airport is, is coming, they, they have an ask. Uh, they have an air flight that goes from Columbia to Denver and vice versa. And I think when they first got American, I think we, we, uh, put a hundred thousand into that to guarantee their income. We actually got the hundred thousand back. Then they, they found an airline frontier maybe that went to Denver, and, uh, they didn't meet their goal, so we lost that.
And that was, that wasn't a hundred though?
No, that was like twenty-five or fifty. And then now they've got, uh, I don't know if it's American again, but anyway, they've got an airline, and their ask would be for us to, to, uh, give twenty-five thousand that, you know, we, we can get back if they meet their, their budget, so she's gonna be here on the, December twenty-four to make the presentation.
That would be like an.
Economic development, that's what we, how we, we had run it under that before.
Anything, Debbie, did, I'm sure I got most of these numbers from you, but on the professional services line, there's a number of.
Yeah, there's always, it's up to them as far as that goes, but I think we have a note on there, don't we?
Well, there's a bit, there's a bunch of things, there's, uh, wage work cafeteria plan agreement, there's West Law monthly fees. Central Missouri Medical Case Management, Civic Plus hosting.
That's the website, so that's.
Supreme Court bar dues, I guess some of this is Jill's stuff. Legal fees.
That's hiring outside attorneys.
Other lobbyists, oh, this is the lobby, oh, we have a.
J C rep and lobbyists. Contract.
I, I, I think thirty, that is, I bet one fifty is J C rep, or twenty-five.
What's the forty-eight thousand lobbyists?
I think lobby is.
RJ.
That's four thousand a month.
Oh, RJ, okay, so that's forty-eight thousand, that won't change.
I don't think so, I think, uh, we had a call from the lobbyists the other day, and they found the contract that we have, and it's, it's okay.
Okay, alright.
They do a good job.
I don't know, how do we get that judge without knowing much about that?
I printed out all the distribution notices, but Debbie would have to tell you what's been spent, if anything.
Oh, on opioid, yeah, okay, alright, thank you.
That looks legit.
Alright, we're good.
So we can talk about.
Insurance, yeah, there we go.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to change that one, too.
Okay. Three hundred and seventy-six thousand, that'll.
Where is it? I'm gonna have to do some adding up of some numbers here, I'm sorry.
Well, we can change that after your.
After we finalize, yeah.
Tomorrow, after we finalize it, okay. So what, what is, is that just our property liability, or is that our liability?
It's kinda everything else that doesn't fit into.
Specific departments, yes, just like building.
All the other buildings, the vehicles, yeah.
General liability, other vehicles, yeah, okay.
Liability, cyber, I put it all into that category. Three forty, what you got?
Oh, I, I wanted to make, I wanted to bring this up, the cost allocation program, that's, we do that every two years. We spent forty-five hundred dollars on it, two years in twenty twenty-three. I would like to see them do a more detailed review. Now, Eric, Eric Coy agreed, he didn't, he didn't make an issue, but he's, we've been charging EMS three percent, we charge these other sales tax funds three percent, statute allows that on sales tax funds. During, uh, during Eric's initial budget request, he, he questioned the need, why is he paying for computer services and another three percent, so. I think, I think what, what I would like for us to do is, instead of just this three percent kinda arbitrary number, explore maybe Maximus doing a more comprehensive review, I just threw in ten thousand, I don't know what it would cost, but would you all like to see us doing a more thorough, uh, cost allocation audit through Maximus that to determine, what, what, we do that now just to determine the computer costs, basically?
And the cost per day per inmate, and then, um, child support, they don't really use it anymore for their reimbursement, but that's what it was for, for at the beginning. But we do use it for computer stuff, as far as what to charge each of the different funds, not only EMS, but the public works.
Right, all of it, yeah, accessory is charged.
I mean, we can look into it, the costs that he's charged us has not gone up, because it is just taking their formulas and refilling them, but if we add a different function to what they do, then yeah, it will, I don't know how much.
Yeah, how do we come up with that three percent?
Statutory.
'Cause that's the max.
It's up to you.
So are you thinking it's gonna make it lower if we?
I just think it would make it more of a true, more accurate.
I think it's gonna end up being more than that, I mean, look how many employees.
Well, then it might, yeah.
So.
Well, that would come on the payable side.
Well, we fill out a lot of information for the indirect cost study, and so does all the different departments.
So when it comes down to the sales tax itself, what, what cost did we incur, because we get these giant sales tax?
It, it was just a way, I'm sure the, whoever wrote it into the statute, a way for the county to recoup what it costs.
For an audit.
Accounting, audit, uh.
Legal stuff comes up, audit, um, IT stuff to keep track of, I mean, yeah, it was just, it's always been a statutory thing since I can remember.
But we did choose to, I don't know, I don't think the statute allows it, it's an enterprise fund, so I don't think there's anything wrong with it, but we did choose to do the same three percent on EMS enterprise. Eric's been questioning, does that really reflect the true cost of what it costs my office, debt, finance, whoever, to provide accounting services, auditing services, whatever, to, to the EMS fund, so. I thought, I, I think I checked with another first-class county or two, yeah, they don't do the three percent arbitrary, they come up with a true cost allocation to charge each fund or whatever department, more of an accurate cost of what, what these costs are.
It's kinda hard to, in a way, to do, I mean, for, like, even utilities and all that stuff comes out of our budget, so that would have to also be then allocated to that pro, building or that department, so, I mean, it can be done.
We wouldn't have to allocate wi- within general fund, I'm thinking more of the, what we charge the other funds.
Right.
We could limit it to just, what is it costing, what, what services are we providing to the sheriff's office for the law enforcement fund, that we could bill you instead of just taking out an arbitrary three percent, or.
So what you're saying is you're taking three percent from me right now, for administrative costs?
Always done that, yeah.
Right, and then on EMS, you're doing it twice?
Yes, on, well, we're doing on his sales tax and on his.
Right, on sales tax and on enterprise.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Just on the sales tax amount, not on all of his fees.
Not everything, but.
It still comes out to the same, but.
No, we charge it on his, uh.
Because you divide out the sales tax between just what's in his, or how do you base the three percent on the inter, um.
On the enterprise fund? On his revenues?
On, on his revenue.
Not, not on the transfer end, no, we're not double, double the sales tax, but we are charging on his three percent on his fees, his other revenues, too.
And this one, we're only doing the three percent on the sales.
Just on the sales tax, not on your other revenues, yeah, just the sales tax, yeah.
Which, that isn't, so.
We're doing what the statute allows, it's just, I don't know how accurate it is, I, I question the accuracy of it.
Okay, I will have to get some direction.
I guess what, see what it costs.
Yeah, right, right, we could explore the cost of it, and then go from there.
We already had bid out that service for next year, so we'll just have to talk to them. And depending on what the price is.
I don't think it's gonna be more than three percent.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna say, what I think we do.
I, I wouldn't be surprised.
What I think when it comes out.
That way, general fund, benefits, and we got, should we charge more to?
Well, and that can help put it to rest, then, 'cause then Chief Hoy can say, okay.
It is the maximum.
Getting a good deal.
Yeah.
Yeah, but at that time, we were already done, I just.
Or if it comes out the other way, then.
You can't do anymore, so we're.
We'll ask for a recount or something.
Yeah.
So just spend the money.
That's why I put that higher in the budget, I, so you're okay at least exploring what it would cost to, to do something like that, okay, very good. And the final thing, I think, I put twelve million dollars in for the new juvenile center, so.
How much?
Twelve, twelve million.
It's just an earmark, it doesn't have that name on there.
The, at the bottom of page forty-five, see the capital improvement line, twelve million, that's.
I'm not even gonna look at it.
You, you want me to?
It's making me cry.
Eric, come back with some oxygen.
How many double eyes will that give?
If it'll help, I'll help build a couple of decks for it, and we can have more room, access.
Well, not trying to.
No, you cannot.
That's a good idea.
Like schools, a couple trailers.
Stirring it up for the inmates, I think they'd enjoy them.
But basically, by the way we moving the ARPA money around, six million and that, really came from ARPA.
Yes.
Yeah, that was my max.
And these will all change based, not all, but carry forward in contingency based on the actual carry forward, so.
Yep.
Okay?
So we're.
About Bitcoin.
Twelve million, you wanna up it?
Oh, tomorrow.
I'll bet twelve million. No, just, I'm just gonna cut it in half, back to six.
Are you ready to call it a day for today, or do you wanna talk anymore?
I do need to go to my appointment deal, not get them two on the schedule, but if we need to come back, I can.
Public works, we have health department.
I think we can do it all tomorrow.
Yeah, prosecutor, prosecutor.
Health, prosecutor.
We did Larry.
Well, we went through his budget, I don't know, yeah, uh, health prosecutor, public works, that's about it.
I think we can do that then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then make a final decision on salaries.
If we have to Thursday afternoon, we can come back, you said you'd be back Thursday afternoon, if we have to.
I'd be back any afternoon, but I would think, I would think, I mean, we went through the sheriff and EMS fairly quickly, so if we do.
If we don't get not-nots tomorrow.
And then health department are two, two biggies.
And I'm hoping I have not-nots, um, figures by tomorrow, and so we'll start at eight thirty, we'll start at the original agenda things that are on there. And again, hopefully the insurance, I might ask you to go ahead and at least give us a direction for the insurance, if I don't have all the final totals, because I am out next week, and we gotta get this firm done.
Yes.
Okay, alright, I can, you guys both go out.
I would make a motion, we, we stand in recess until. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I forth it.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Well, we're, we're supposed to bring something to this anymore, with a duck or something?
A duck?
We're only talking about pulling one feather out of the.
Feather at a time.
Oh, wait. Get the most feathers out of the duck, so it lays them out, yes, goose, actually.
That, I figured it would come back to a goose, but I don't know that, Jeff.
Where did that come from?
I had a partner who always used that when we got to arguing about.
Should I shut it or?
So what are you up to? So I'm just trying to get the most feathers out of it, at least about this.
Yeah.
What were we talking about when that came up?
Uh, it was something that we couldn't, I mean, I think I said it before.
Yeah, I saw it, it's still there, I'll be able to remember it now, 'cause the sheriff, your goose is cooked, rabbit.